Me to work at six thirteen. See announcements, no announcements tonight?
Well, there was the one thing I left on your desk with the can drive.
Can you send it?
State Center, I took it out of the package, we could push it over thirty nights and I'm about to do that email thread. But but say something about that.
Okay, so summer food drive at the G R library kicks off June first, so it's ongoing. Targeting items in high demand monthly game, small packaging and individually wrapped items are best. So for July cleaning products, suggestions are paper towels, toilet paper tissues, laundry detergent, spray cleaner. Looking ahead to August, it would be practice foods, which includes box cereal, pancakes, pancake mix, pancake syrup, peanut butter and jelly.
Thanks, and then when we get a public comment, Bob does have a comment, so.
Alright, so that's it for announcements. I made a comment.
Okay. What I'd like to do is I don't understand it, that's where you can see me. The Historic Commission and the Cable Advisory Committee are working together to do interviews with all the veterans, the military veterans that are in town and try to preserve that history. We'd like to keep as much as we can here in town, put it on the historic site. So that some people can call it up and 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 follow along, you know, see what we're doing. And we also want to send it to, if they're still collecting it, to Library of Congress. They had one interview last Saturday at the library. That was the drama there. I have a way of saying to be honest, I'm going to be the next one to sadly be down the library. Right now, we're using the library because it's right now is the only spot, I think, around that we have access to. As it progresses, we may see if we can find other places that are a little bit more convenient. Because the library is really only convenient Saturday and Sunday. And everybody that's involved has a nine to five job, so it's again, we're we're kind of limited to those two days or a day here, or have to squeeze something in someplace else, so. But again, it's a it's a work in progress. And I just wanted to put it out there that any veteran in town is wants to be interviewed, is willing to be interviewed. You know, contact me, I'm sending out letters. I'm going to start with fifteen, because there's a hundred and sixty-two, I believe, veterans in town, so. All staff is small number. And that way we can, you know, see who wants to, who doesn't want to. And we can kind of fill in instead of trying to balance out a hundred and sixty-two people, see if we can fit, you know, balance out fifteen and see where we go. And again, it says nothing that anybody in town has to do. We're just, if they would want to participate, we're more than willing to interview them and save them.
So did you learn how to use the camera so you can do some of the interviewing? Is that part of it for the cable advisory committee that?
That was one of the things I had suggested at one point was that maybe tend to move with the operation of the equipment. I wouldn't mind doing that, but I'd want to make sure that I've got Adam Stone and, you know, Kevin Lo and Kevin Lo that that know the equipment. And I'm willing to, you know, train this community.
So right now, you're focusing on getting veterans in.
Yes, just doing it, because there are a couple of places that I've thought about in town, we might be able to sit down and then do something, but if we get veterans that want to do it during the day, obviously, we can't have somebody, you know, skip their regular job just to interview, so. We want to work on some stuff like that, so again, it's a work in progress, but that's what we want to do.
Great, thank you.
And along with that, the cable advisory committee is also looking to do people like myself or Rick Philo or somebody that has some knowledge of the time of history back a few years and do some of the town of history also, so. We'll see what we can do.
You're going to be a movie star going.
I know. A little too late now. Okay, thank you.
I do just, Bob, I do want to just commend Mac Close, our assistant town clerk. He's really stepped up and offered to help and and established himself as the point of contact, you know, for any support that you need on this with the mailings with. There's a there's a waiver that Bob wisely, you know, asked me about, asked Tim, Zest and Town Council. He sent me a waiver form, so I sent that out to them yesterday to just to make sure everyone's specifically consenting to use of the video entry and so forth, but Max is going to be the point person, he's and he's a real excited to help with this.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate anything he and everybody else does, I really do. Can't do it all.
Yep, very good.
Okay.
Alright, I've been town manager updates.
Okay, so the first one, we've got the kickoff Monday, this is really exciting. We're really geared up for this, this is going to be the kickoff with the mass department of environmental restoration.
Yeah.
For the study of the culvert down on River Road at the field and the state objectives for this, you can see in the email thread with Georgia Anne, are really to look at this as a case study for really for process. We are definitely going to be pushing as much as we can to make sure that the end result is helpful to us and very specific in terms of advancing a concept design, ideally to some stage of engineering design. We're really going to wave that flag on Monday. There was some some verbiage in the email that, you know, gave us a little pause because it was basically like, you know, setting out a process and we hope it's helpful to you too. And we're really going to very politely say that like our reason to participate is we really need help on this cover. And we want to make sure that when they issue the scope of work to the their in-house stable of pre-qualified consultants, that that scope of work includes specific design and engineering services to take this to a certain level of actionability. And Nancy Powell, we had a really good discussion about this last night at C C R C. Nancy has done a lot of work with Georgia Anne, has great things to say about her and says that she thinks D E R is going to be fully aligned on wanting this to to become something that's actionable over the course of how many years becomes an actual project, so. You can see from the, you know, approach in the email. You know, the state's going to issue, create a scope, send it around with their pre-qualified vendors, select a vendor. Then the work will begin, so whether that's going to take two or three months or four or five months, I'm not sure, we all know, you know, things never go as quick as you want and and the state is, this is the first time they're doing this program. So we're going to make sure to advocate that the work is as actionable and tangible to our specific concerns as possible. But we're really excited for that kickoff Monday morning and while our conservation agent Clay Hutchinson, his official first day was pushed back a week till the twenty ninth to give him more some more time to transition with housing and so forth, he is going to participate in the meeting Monday morning, so he'll be right on the ground for that effort, so. That'd be myself, Clay, Butch, Christine Wallace and and Caitlin Barker will all be part of that. Next item, we're we're right on the verge of executing a we extended the the time for the contract for the invasive species management just because the prior contract was due to expire June thirty and all of the work under the prior contract had been completed. I knew last summer, but as you know, we'll be doing a new statement of new thinking of work, basically a new scope to append to the contract. So we've been working with the vendor and with staff and and volunteers on that, so we have some red lines, we've got some input. But Butch and Paul have been really hands on with this, which has been really helpful. And we've got a lot of green input from residents, so we, you know, I had hoped to actually have a contract in place yesterday, but because of some other things that came up that day to happen, so. And it's probably not going to be tomorrow, but I don't want it to go past Monday to get that contract in place so that Brian Callen and this this firm can really schedule the work and go forward with the treatment.
And when is the first treatment anticipated?
Uh, he's got it penciled in for for late July, and I told him a couple of weeks ago, I said, you know, we'll 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 work out the details. I said, put it into your work plan for late July, early August was what he said he wanted to do, and I said, that's that's no problem, we'll have that done. It's just a matter of getting all the, you know, the land, the verbiage wherever he wants it, but one of the objectives, which is a very much a shared objective by all parties, is that it's not just a one-time event. It's really to do this in such a way that gives the town what I think on the sidewalk, we had a couple of weeks ago, he said it and forget it, where basically like, once this treatment's done, it's then just routine O and M for the next hundred years, I think is what he said, from your side, it's might be ambitious, but that is what he's said, so that's where like the 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 great collaboration that's going on with Butch in terms of, you know, the mowing and the the field maintenance is really important, and that and those, not all those mowing details are going to get worked out in the contract, this is a contract with the vendor. But it's going to basically, you know, dovetail with with what he's doing in its own, make management of that land. The page school study, we had a very constructive meeting, remote meeting with the Eugene app earlier this morning. That was with myself, Christine, Sam Jocelyn, Butch, Caitlin and Brian. The the approach that we're taking on this, we still haven't gotten our consolidated comments because we haven't gotten comments from all parties. So I I wanted to, I know when it was sent to you, it was right in town meeting season. I don't know if you guys have had time to even fully read it or process it, but we'd like to get them the town's comments as soon as we can, ideally in like the next six weeks. So I think if we all can commit to that, that like by the end of August, they're getting all of our comments. They're going to then do a complete update including identifying those things that in in our comments are out of scope, we know there are going to be some of those. We've invited them to get, once they've got our comments, they're going to get us a proposal for additional services that weren't part of the original scope, but that at this point, we think will be very helpful to really make this comprehensive. One quick example is S A P, I mean, that wasn't like, you know, there's a couple of paragraphs in there about S A P, but it's not a full-on analysis. So that's just one example, there are others. So they'll give us a proposal for additional services and additional budget. Ideally by, you know, early September, which we I can then bring to the board and my recommendation will be, I don't know how much it'll be, but will be art for funding. But if that's not that we that we want to go, it would be timely to get somebody onto the fall town meeting if we choose to. My strong preference would be art for funding because I I think it's going to be, you know, increment above the base contract, it's not going to be like anything close to, you know, so. But then, once they've filled all that in, then we'll have a complete updated draft. That's when we would intend to do more of like a go big, put it all over the website, social media, maybe even hailing. Really a high-profile announcement that this big, major and almost consequential study is is complete, ready for public review, we would anticipate it probably being January, being a realistic timeline for when that next complete draft would be done. And at that point, it'll have had all of our fingerprints on it, so we'll all have a sense of of ownership of it. And that's, you know, I think it'll be a good time to get more like hundreds and hundreds of people in the community to really look at it because as you know, we had just a great discussion with them, you know, this morning, they they fully understand this report is going to be the touchstone for what is likely to be a two or more year community conversation that could not be more consequential in terms of the long-term planning for that for the town.
So how do you want to get comments from us?
So so we've been, people provide them in different formats, that, you know, we have, we have a draft that reflects all the comments because some people gave them to Christine like in in handwritten markets. She's been building those into a single PDF, so we have them all in one place. I'll send that around to you guys, and if you're comfortable adding comments to the go the acrobat, that's great, that saves her a step. And but that but as a service to the consultant and just for overall efficiency, having all of the comments in a single document is really helpful because it allows them to really just, you know, and and it eliminates duplication of effort, so. So she's going to send that to them in the next couple of workdays, it could be tomorrow, it could be Monday. When she does that, I'll send to you what she sends to the consultants. You can then supplement that with your comments, I haven't completed my review, I only got about a third of the way through the report before I got subsumed in other things, so. I'll put in my comments, I said I could commit to do that by the end of August. And so so yeah, so I'll send that around. Hiring process, really the only reason I I put that on is just to to acknowledge the conservation agent. We had previously announced a start date of seven twenty-two, we did push that back to seven twenty-nine just to give him some more time to to move and find housing and so forth, but we're really excited to have him start. And that happens to be the same day, the twenty-ninth, that the new land and building services administrator, Jennifer Geary, is going to be starting also on Monday the twenty-ninth, so that that week of the twenty-ninth, we're definitely going to want to be, you know, management going to be put sometimes, we're getting integrated, yeah.
Is there any efficiency for you in onboarding new people the same week?
I think so, yeah, I I think it's actually going to work out nicely, yeah. So we're really excited for for both of those integrators to start. P school H vac, so that's now officially closed down, we submitted the utility remade paperwork to National Grid earlier this week, so that's in process. And we got the warranty and because this was federally funded, this is subject to all those kind of finer points in that federal, you know, purchase policy that you'll see later tonight. So, you know, there's certain things we got to do, we got to put a sticker on it, set it's purchased federal money, there's there's, you know. But but that's done, and and that was effectively done on June twentieth was the date that there was a kind of final testing and training given to to Brian and to school facility staff.
So the reason I'm more concerned about a warranty.
Still concerned.
Yeah.
Angie sent me a email with the full warranty, and this is just, this is a piece of paper like.
Yeah, and I think you were on that too, you probably didn't see it because you're just back from Canada.
Yeah, my comment on that would be it's not a a very complete warranty, like a lot of warranties you get is a piece of paper and it's always for it. The warranty that, when you read it, it will provide for parts over a certain timeframe of all labor for any other place beyond the town. Whereas a strongly worded warranty would have the vendor put in them anything that would go to affect it and replace it under their contract. So Mike.
Did you, you know, I I did read through, but I didn't have a chance to go to their their standard terms, I think there's there's a reference, a link, I think, to standard terms. And and so I didn't, I wondered if labor was included.
It's very specifically not included. So that's, that could be the biggest, not particular, something is defective, it's got to get removed and something replaced, so in the future, my comment would be on any contracts for things like this, I would think the warranty should be approved as part of the award and prior to any award of any contract, it should be part of this, a little one with getting bids on things. Well, you know, a sample of oil and plate warranty that would be included. And then the contract shouldn't be awarded until you have a satisfactory warranty. If you've got a big dollar here, I mean, if you're buying a ring of paper, I don't care.
Well, especially in this case where.
Huge, huge fire truck, you know, you want to make sure everything is appropriately cut, even on that, or even on a new T L D and that goes in. And the warranty, if you make a part of the fact that will give you fifty-nine cent part, fifty-nine cent part, it's going to cost you three hundred dollars to make it replace. Got to look at the warranty to finally make sure exposure is enough eliminated. Maybe at least have a warranty.
Alright.
Let's see, work with town auditor regarding federal single audit. So you've been hearing about this for a little while, that actually got started on Tuesday, we had the auditors in Tuesday morning. We heard from them last Wednesday, so had a whole half week notice. And, you know, to have audits start the day after July fifteenth, which the period of, you know, lead June to July fifteenth is perhaps the single busiest time of the entire year on in the county town accountant's desk, closing out a practice school year and the very next morning to have auditors here with their computers was a little bit like. Okay. So, but we we kept the scope focused on the federal single audit because it was very, I mean, it was, they offered this basically to be helpful, the auditing firm to be helpful. And the idea that if they did have any findings, they wanted to find that early so there'd be time to resolve them, so they wouldn't have to do management comments. So this is not a town audit, that's been on the calendar for months for, I think, the week of September, the the second or third week of September. So, you know, they did on Tuesday start to go in the direction of looking for things that are not part of the federal audit or part of the town, and I'm out with them and I said, you know, with all due respect, like if they told us ahead of time, that's one thing, but they didn't, and they're starting to ask for things from different departments that normally they wouldn't produce till September, I thought that was a little bit discourteous. Given that, you know, I was starting to see staff like scrambling and having to drop everything to deal with audits, like it's July sixteenth, guys. I think the fiscal year ended last night. So anyway, so they ended up only spending a day and Jenny told me they got everything they needed regarding the federal single audit. So they'll be back in September to do the regular audit.
And that was five thousand dollars for you that?
That was the answer, I mean, you saw the email thread, like it's that's what we have for an estimate, I don't think it's going to be any more than that, but that's what we'll have to be there tonight for the part of money.
And if it exceeds five thousand, then you have to go back to model.
I don't think it would, I mean, they they know their business, they've they've done these for lots of towns, so I think that's that's probably pretty good.
Stay straight up, it's five thousand, same plus or minus.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, another cost addition, five thousand dollars for this one major program.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not like a a formal proposal, but it's, I think.
Then didn't one of them defer to Tony and?
But they both agreed.
Oh, alright.
Yeah, I I took it to be that's the price.
But, you know, just to give you a little insight into the kind of what, you know, why it's such a big deal, so this, you know, that federal grant award policy, which there's quite a lot to. That's the kind of thing we're going to be audited against, like it says here, you're going to be doing this, that's this, are you doing this, this, and so it's it's not just doing the work, because I think we have a great team that's doing things by the book, I know that. It's all the documentation that comes with federal money. And so it's definitely, you know, it's definitely a time impact on on those of us in the finest but it's off to, if, you know, I think it went well on Tuesday, they got what they needed, I think they were very impressed. I, you know, the the auditor asked me like, oh, do you have written, you know, written, is there, she said something, hey, is there, is there documentation of the funds that are put down, you know, of course there is, there's the forms and they're signed and the meeting minutes and the all the stuff that you see. It's great, Stephanie got us started on the right track with that a couple of years ago, and Jenny's carried that forward and so Jenny's got everything to find her, it's all very organized, so I think they were very impressed. But but she even said something like, oh, you've you've got your your meeting minutes are all current, I'm like, yes, they are. What did you expect? So but they deal with a lot of small towns, so and they've dealt with this town for a long time, so they know it wasn't, they know it wasn't only like that.
Right. So, I mean, are we likely to have another special grant, I mean, this is all for our.
It's only because we received over seven fifty in a single year.
Yeah.
So this might be the only one we have to do. And I kind of hope that's true because it's definitely a
Yeah.
Well, we're going to block over your hand for that.
The break. Yeah, yeah, I certainly hope over the next three to five years, you know.
Seven fifty a year would be a big time, but.
Yeah, it would, but but we would when the time comes, I think we'll need that kind of, yeah. So it's great to get it under our belt and to kind of like build that build that familiarity with with what we extracted from that process. But it's not going to be an annual thing or anything like that.
We're on the watch, so we have to handle that. Sorry.
The next one, you know, I don't normally put in this kind of thing into, but but it, this is a situation that kind of comes up out of nowhere. It becomes something we drop everything, have to spend a bunch of hours on. I wanted to share with you the request that was sent out because as we get answers back, you know, that has obvious implications in terms of both water and town side, in terms of infrastructure, potential future capital needs, paving, potential stormwater, you know, improvements or whatever, so. You know, we're trying to get to the bottom of of that, if you have questions on the memo, I'm happy to to get into that, but I just wanted to make you aware just kind of crops up out of nowhere.
Good questions.
Okay.
I don't know how anybody legitimately could think the town owned the road. Because was a subdivision of the three houses, not accepted by the town.
Yeah.
Cravens didn't own the subdivision, we bought the Craven property, we didn't buy the roads owned by those people, so it's never been accepted by the town, and Cravens had no right to sell it even if they thought they owned it.
That's that's the, that's a really good point, you know.
They never, Cravens never had title that property, it wasn't theirs, this was a separate parcel.
Yeah.
The town made a mistake at one point, or maybe they were gracious enough to do some raiding and I think some.
But even that, that's, it's not being gracious, it's not legal to expend public funding.
Nice. It could have been a real mistake because people weren't thinking about it, but I don't see how anybody could think you own, that that town has any ownership of whatsoever. I don't know how you, it's almost.
I'm going to be really, really interested to see the response, I, we sent it to Carol Murray, who's the the K D land use attorney, she's she's only worked, done a little bit of work for us, but we've been really impressed. I know she referred it to Sharon, our real estate council, obviously we work with very closely. And Sharon is the one going to be getting getting into those like deeds and conveyances and who actually owns what. Because I I'm not, I have no expertise in reading deeds, but that's interesting that you, you know, it's the town. And then what you just said about.
Cravens are not, it's very specific, it was a road for the subdivision owned by the three houses.
I mean, it seemed to me, at least in the, maybe it was in the email that you sent to K D, it seemed like there was some question as to whether or not the roadway that's there, the golden sack roadway, actually lay on privately owned land or or one is now considered to be town-owned, and and if and if it is on, it's now considered to be town-owned land, how in the world did that happen, how in the world would that be?
It's still, and it would still wouldn't make it a public road in any scenario because it's never been accepted.
But but if it is on town-owned land, then we don't, we get into a really messy situation where private entities are are using town-owned land as their own land.
But I don't see how it can be town-owned land in any fashion, Cravens never owned it.
Okay, I I don't know what the survey says, so.
Well, the documents tell you, it's these three houses.
Yeah.
Three lot subdivision owns that roadway. Wasn't Cravens property, Craven owns this property.
They didn't have the ability to convey it.
Right, they can't convey it, they didn't know it, so the town, that fool doesn't own it. And if you look back in two thousand and one, select within, it says the property owns the town. Have to work to get road acceptance by the town, it's very clear again, town doesn't own it, I just need to be just.
So, yeah, it's going to be interesting what the what the attorney says, you know, our, what we did with that memo was was basically okay, we we didn't, you know, we put in a couple hours on it, we didn't want to put in dozens of hours because it's it just came up out of nowhere, so we basically bashed together what we have. So we basically bashed together what we have. And so these, these are our questions. Send it to them and then, um, you know, we'll see what they say and, and what the implications are in terms of who's responsible for, um, both the road and the water line, which, which as it sits right now, does not meet any kind of standard of of, of, of public water line.
And isn't there a, a schedule demand on this?
Yeah, there's a house being rebuilt, a second house being, been rebuilt. I mean, it's substantially constructed. Those out there a couple weeks ago and it's, uh, they haven't, I gather they haven't yet approached, you know, Marcus saying, hey, we wanna tie to the water and but that's just, that can happen tomorrow. The next day it's, it's just, it's imminent presumably.
I just don't know how we bought one parcel. We didn't buy the subdivision and Cravens. We bought the Cravens. They've never owned this parcel. They can't sell it here. It's no building. So I understand even the level of this discussion kind of that people follow.
Well, yeah, and then I assuming that's all, and I'm not doubting you, just assuming that's all the case, then, um, the fact that the town has done improvements on the road and had it maintained, it's is another significant issue.
Right, yeah, I was very surprised to learn that it's for instance, pow, that we lost. Ten years.
Yeah, you can stop doing what you're not supposed to do.
Right.
Right.
No, I, I, I was, yeah.
Who's the trash picked up? Is it?
Uh, I, I did ask about that. I believe it's all brought to the bottom of the street, I believe, but I'm not, I'm not so sure on that.
That may be more a function of the slope of the road than.
Right, right, right.
Isn't the hill is the same way.
Yeah, the lack of turnaround. So anyway, I, I just, I wanted to make you aware of it, because if it does, if it either blows up because it's the town's responsibility, or it blows up because it's not, it's gonna blow up and, uh, have some implications. So I just try to keep you guys apprised of things that are coming on, on that pipe. Uh, has a mitigation plan update? Uh, you know, it's every time you think it's done, it's just more and more and more. Uh, but it, we're, we're like on the, we're on the threshold and, uh, actually, just in the last two hours, we got some updated maps from NVPC with the map changes that we've requested. So, um, basically that hazard mitigation plan is gonna be, be before this board for formal adoption. I'd, I'd like to say within two months, ideally, uh, in, in September, I know later than that. Uh, once NVPC gets us the complete draft, I'll, I'll work with the chair. We'll get it attended, but at that point, you guys will be asked to vote it. It'll then need to be approved by FEMA and, uh, Senate, FEMA, and then, then finally get that thing officially approved. Something under other updates. Oh, yeah, we, you know, yet another thing, we meeting with FEMA on Tuesday to close out the, uh, monies that we got from COVID, though, you know, that, I mean, this thing was like three years ago. But there was some, you know, some post to close out meeting that had to happen. So we heard from that office, you know, uh, six or eight weeks ago, and we're all scratching our heads like, you know, done with FEMA in years, but that, you know, they're just trying to close out all these FEMA, or all these, I'm sorry, COVID things like across the country. This was an office in Louisiana. So we had a very productive fifteen minute meeting with them on Tuesday. We logged in through the portal. We checked a box saying, you know, it's basically verifying that the numbers that we submitted, that they sent us are um, reconciled with the numbers we submitted and they touched the penny. Uh, it, it actually brought back, it was almost like a post-trauma, 'cause, uh, the, the Excel database, you, you can't believe it. It had the FEMA, it had the CARES Act, seventy-five percent for one, twenty-five percent for, I mean, every.
And there wasn't a rounding error that messed you up by a penny?
Well, and that was even better, because when you're keying it, we had Excel spreadsheet, but when you're keying it into the system, and this was back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, it didn't accommodate decimals. So the numbers like, there were rounding errors that me and Stephanie and Jenny at that time had to like have like a side spreadsheet, but it, we couldn't, it didn't allow us to report to the penny. So it, it did create discrepancies between what we reported. But, but our spreadsheet spread, it, it tied the penny with, with what we got from FEMA. It was the CARES Act. It was really the one that didn't account for decimals. Anyway, so the um, COVID money we got from FEMA is officially done. We thought it was a couple of years. Uh, and I will say Rebecca was really helpful in, in like corresponding with FEMA and just making sure this, you know, you know, 'cause we didn't know, we're, oh, you still have this thing to do. And it turned out it was just a fifteen minute call, but a Zoom meeting, Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
So that's that.
Took it off the list.
Bet you didn't even know the question.
So I think that was actually all under Xanique. Oh, there was one more thing. Uh, you know, people may have seen on, on Facebook in the last couple of days. There's been some, uh, information about the, uh, adverse possession claim that was, uh, filed for the, uh, property off, uh, Port House Lane. And so just to say briefly, uh, that's, uh, that filing was, uh, the with the town expected that, the town, uh, through the board and Comic-Con, uh, has been working with the, uh, budding landowners of Benores Realty Trust for the last, uh, several months. They've been terrific, really, really, uh, you know, good to work with. Uh, and because the land had been acquired based on the uh, current parcel description, and that was what was tied to the grant and the conservation restriction and everything. Uh, once this encroachment was identified, which came up through the, uh, baseline documentation report, that's sort of, you know, required for the conservation restriction. Uh, because, uh, you know, where it was in the process and the requirements of state land grant, the only way to resolve this was through a court filing. And I'm telling the board, which you already know, 'cause you've been, you've been part of this process, but um, there was a, a post we, you know, put out within clear information, uh, but, you know, it's a complicated matter. So it's something if, if, uh, the board wants to agenda a future meeting to really go through like in more detail, but since it, since it is, uh, kind of timely with some of the so, uh, social media, uh, questions, uh, it's basically, even though it's a court filing, and so one might say, oh, the town suit is actually a collaborative thing, where the town through the select board and the Comic-Con had, had previously agreed with the landowner that the town is not going to contest that and in fact is gonna work toward a settlement to get it formally resolved, so that the, uh, lot line can be ratified to, to reflect what really is a matter of law, it should be, because the, uh, the, uh, there was open and notorious use of the land for more than twenty years. We confirmed with the prior property owner, the Austins, that they uh, had never contested it. So it was, so basically it checked all the boxes for adverse possession. It's just a matter of working its way through the land court and, uh, uh, the vehicle to get that formally resolved would be a settlement agreement, a last by the court, at which point the assesses' maps would be updated. And, uh, incorporated by cross-reference into the conservation restriction, um, and so forth.
Can I make a comment? I should, but I will. First thing is, I think it's very unfortunate that there's somebody who wants to stir this up on Facebook. Um, the issue's been well attended to. I wanna thank the Benoreses. They've been exceptionally good to work with on resolving which what the legal document is called, the diminished issue, it's very, very small. We're talking about a seven thousand square foot piece. It's insignificant to the rest of the parcel, which is
Thirty-two acres.
Thirty-two acres. And so for somebody to just go on Facebook and try and stir this up, you're offensive. Um, and again, I think the town done very well with it. And I appreciate the cooperation of the Benoreses and it, it's all ending up in the right place, so. Facebook can be a real miserable thing sometimes if it shoots inappropriately. That's my comment, not the board's.
Alright. Alright, um, are you here for something?
I, I, you know, I, I'm sorry, uh, apologies for being late. I have on my calendar for six thirty, so I'll be pretty late. Um, I had submitted a letter asking for permission to, um, uh, work in the old town hall on a public art project.
Okay, that's not on our agenda tonight. Did somebody tell you that it was gonna be discussed tonight?
Yeah, yeah. You, you never got that letter?
I, I'm aware of it.
Oh, okay.
But it wasn't on the agenda. Uh, did someone tell you it was gonna be on the agenda?
Did somebody tell me it was gonna be on the agenda? No, there's nobody to blame.
Okay, okay. Yeah, the town clerk has been the primary point of contact.
Yeah.
He's, he's at a conference, uh, today, so he's not here tonight, but
Yeah.
It's, uh, uh, yeah, I, I think he referred you to the facility use request form.
Yep.
And, and there's a fee structure associated with that and, uh, uh, but it's, it's something that, you know, we can, uh.
Yeah, once you complete the form and work with the town clerk and everything's acceptable, then he'll submit it and we'll put it on an agenda for us to review and go on. That, so that's the process.
Problem is for me is time. As I'm on a, I have a contract that I can get done by October fifteenth, which doesn't leave me a lot of time.
Yeah, we meet every two weeks, the select board, so.
Oh, dude, oh, yeah.
If you can get with them, we use that Monday and make sure it's complete before it comes to the.
Well, and, and just to tease this out a little bit, so wouldn't, uh, I don't think it would come to the board unless you were seeking a fee reduction.
Uh, can you tell me what the fee is? Because that, that makes a difference.
Yeah, well, it's in the form that he sent. So it would be basically, it's, 'cause it's typically the, the, you know, old town halls, so called, is, uh, uh, rented out by the day. So it would be the duration. So if you were seeking anything other than the standard fee schedule, that's when it would come to the board.
Right, and I am, because that would be too much money for me.
Okay, so I don't know if you communicated to the town clerk that you would be seeking a fee reduction?
Um, well.
Cause that, that's what brings it to the board.
Yeah, it's in the letter. I mean, that I submitted. So I was, I was told to do certain things. One was to go to, to talk to Brian Richard. And then the other thing was to, and we met at the town hall and, and then the other thing was to submit a letter
Mm-hmm.
that stated what I was looking for. Um, so that's what I did. I didn't know there was another form. I would have filled that out come, I fill out forms, all this stuff.
If you were the town clerk, he'll, he'll, uh, help you do the proper change too.
Alright, well, um, so is there, I guess I would ask, is there a possibility? 'Cause I, I need to find a place. I was sort of thinking that this would work out. Um, so I absolutely think that's the
Yeah, so the issue is we can't discuss it if it's not on the agenda.
Got it.
And none of us have the information to even give you a, you know, any kind of feedback. So your best bet is to fill a form out with the clerk. And then if it needs to come to the board, well, we meet again in two weeks, so it's possible.
I think, and you were talking about part of this wouldn't involve Brian creating scaffolding for it. So it's, it's more than just a facility use.
It is, it is. I mean, things have been significantly reduced. You know, I went, I just came back from Niagara Falls, which is where this, this project was taking place. Um, where I'm gonna install it and it, I measured the wall. We measured the wall with the committee and it's, it's, it's a lot smaller. So it's not as massive. I mean, I really only need an eight foot high by twenty-six foot long space and we can build a floor and put up a structure. We're doing aluminum, so it's light, it's lightweight. It's not being done on you know, plywood or anything heavy. So it's not gonna cause any structural damage. It's completely freestanding.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll do that if that's what I, and I, you know, so that's.
Yeah, the town, so, yeah, normally, yeah, the facility use, uh, request is, is actually goes through, it's Kate and Barker, but, but Jim, I, I thought, I knew, he'd mentioned it to me and obviously, 'cause I, I have some background on it, but I, uh, I, I have it copied on the correspondence, so I didn't know that you had expected to be here tonight and
Yeah, just because of the time, um, the timeframe that I'm looking at.
No, I understand, but when, you know, when I work with the chair and set the agenda, we do it based on what's, what's sent out as his agenda. I didn't, it wasn't me.
So there's a form. Where did I, so we get the form from the clerk, you said?
It's on the town website.
Yeah, it's on multiple places on the town website. It's the, the request for use of town facilities form. And it's a, it's a simple two-page form. Uh, and it's got a fee schedule and, uh, where this is kind of a non-conventional use, 'cause normally someone would reserve it for a meeting or for an event, and it would be for a half a day or for a day. So where you'd be looking for it for, I gather, like three months.
Well, my use would not restrict the building from being used by anybody else. I I mean.
Right, so, so the point is, it's not, it's not like run of the mill request.
No, I understand.
Yeah, so I think, uh, but, but the form, and then you can just attach your letter with a narrative to it and then, uh, to the extent you'd be seeing relief on the fees, which sounds like you would, that's when it comes to the board. So the board needs to get two weeks from tonight.
Okay, good, that's fine. Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Uh, I have some good target updates and discussion. There are a couple, um, Sage Center, uh, activities, summer cookout, Wednesday, July twenty-fourth at eleven-thirty. Um, you need to register for that. And then a casino trip on Wednesday, July thirty-first. Um, for casino, maybe, either you go there?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, um, I, I don't think we have.
Yeah, Dwight is not on yet, so we'll skip over CB. He will be, he will be zooming in at some point. I said, oh, well, I'll give you a heads up when I see him.
Okay.
Show up in the Zoom.
Next item is an update on the rain management plan.
So, you know, I sometimes just put these agendas in just to kind of give you guys a, a sense of some of what we're working on, which, you know, largely dovetails with what you're working on. But, so I don't have anything to say about it unless, uh, anyone has any questions on anything in there. Uh, but we meet every two weeks. This was the one from a couple of weeks ago. It was a pretty substantial meeting. Uh, we met again yesterday morning. Great meeting. Uh, it's just such a great collaborative, uh, dynamic we have right now and have had for, for some time now. Um, but, uh, you know, this obviously, yeah, dovetails with some of the big picture policy things, but also some of the more nuts and bolts, uh, stuff that's, uh, kind of cross-cutting among multiple departments.
Questions?
I will say at the meeting yesterday morning, a, a, a primary focus was, uh, the goal setting taking place a week from tonight with the board uh, to get, uh, to solicit, uh, department has input on, uh, you know, what they think ought to be on the uh, on the assignment. We'll get into that a little bit more if you have any challenges. Jim, man.
Thanks. Um, any board mission media updates? No? Right, he.
Well, I'll, I'll just mention, um, the, uh, uh, energy sustainability committee is working on coming up with a more refined, um, proposal for the, uh, even if it's all checked, so this, this is discussed. Um, and, you know, the proposal so far doesn't really this, we need more detail and we also need a um, not overly conservative um, perspective on it. Um, it's, there is, the, the proposals, it's been received as a horrible thing, they're kind of worst-case assumptions. And, and I don't think that's appropriate or anything's realistic.
In terms of seller production or?
Apparently, they, the revenue, well, when the revenue works out. And obviously, this has to make sense, but we shouldn't, we shouldn't like work so hard to make it look as bad as possible. We should try to make it look realistic and, and right now, the, uh, um, the way the numbers are shown, the way the assumptions that are made, makes it look as bad as possible. And I don't quite understand why that is, but, um, so, but, you know, it's always a question of getting people's bandwidth, um, including that, so, um, uh, yeah, there are two or three people on, who are aware and, and will, will.
Chief Dwyer has, uh, has logged in, so I think if you wanna take out.
Okay, sure. So we'll go back to the police accreditation. Are you with us, Mike?
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Hey, welcome back. Sorry, not feeling well.
Wish you had a good story, but just, just bad timing, I guess, but thanks.
So we had skipped over the police department accreditation process. Do you wanna give us an update on that? And then we'll go into the ambulance, um, discussion.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Um, so the, the process really is, is continued to be an ongoing process, uh, to maintain our accreditation status. Um, Sergeant Johnson has been, um, taking the lead as the accreditation manager for the department. Um, and, uh, a lot of other officers have been. a lot of other officers have been uh helping out uh as well throughout this process, but beginning next week, we have a three-day um site visit uh where it's gonna be an onsite assessment uh with members from the um commission, and um they're gonna go through um all of the mandatory standards that we uh uh were required to um to to meet and to um hold ourselves to, obviously, the professional standards of the police department, um, and um those standards tend to impact, you know, officer safety, high liability, you know, risk management type issues. Um, so that's gonna be a three-day process, and then um we'll work um through the next, um there'll be sort of a review process that takes place place next, uh, there may be follow-up, um, regarding, you know, any of the um any of the um policies and procedures and um standards are reviewed um with us on-site. There'll be some follow-up, and then decisions will be made, um, whether or not to um to uh vote in favor of re-accreditation for the department, so early on, the started, um, uh, we met, um certification standards first, and then became an accredited um police agency, uh, and and really, the difference is, um certification is sort of your entry-level base um process where you're um, you're assessed on meeting mandatory standards only, um, when we moved up to accreditation, the level of accreditation um, that added in, you know, sort of performance-based, um, or your unique, you know, optional standards that don't necessarily um apply to each and every department in the Commonwealth, but um, you know, there may be operations that we're doing uh that would count towards that, so we met those additional standards uh and uh became accredited, so this process now is just um having the onsite visit in West Newbury with Sergeant Johnson uh and myself, and um moving through the process, which would finish in the fall.
So is this mostly administrative and management, or i- is there any actual performance component for our officers?
It it's it's everything, it's operations, so your day-to-day operations in the police department, and then the high-level, you know, operations at the um administrative and the leadership level.
Any questions?
I I have just a couple of more more conversational than than questions, it's it's funny, Chief, cause uh, you know, with uh, we had the auditors in this week, as you know, with the uh federal single audit, we audit, you know, down on it mid-September, and it's kind of all hands on deck, it takes months to prepare, it's, you know, you got, it's like, it's big, high-stakes thing. This really seems to me like a similar dynamic for your department as audit is for the finance department, of kind of like this, um, i- it's it's very clear, I mean, the enormous amount of uh effort that you and your team make, and I I just have to think this is like a big, uh you know, kind of all hands on deck, you know, taking an enormous amount of preparation and during the visit. I I could just can only imagine, you know, over and above what you do every day anyway, uh. So having been the chief a couple of years now, and having been in the department somewhere twenty-five years, and, um I I think I know the answer to this, but I'll just ask it really for those uh watching the meeting, uh, do the pros outweigh the cons of accreditation? Cause it's obviously adds, you know, a huge amount of work to you and and your team.
Yeah, it certainly is an awful lot of work, and and I'm I'm sure similar to, you know, a lot of the processes that, um your departments go through, um, it's, it happens each and every day, uh, and we're we're always gonna be held to those um, those higher standards. Um, it's a challenge, I I know the post-commission is reviewing whether or not every agency in the Commonwealth should at least meet the minimum standard, which is certification, um, so that's sort of um sitting on the back burner right now. Uh, but yes, it's an awful lot of work, all the agencies, and all the public safety agencies, EMA, FIRE, um, there are, you know, there are, you know, questions that relate to how they interface with the police department, um, so yeah, it's 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 a lot of work, uh, and and we're a small agency, so it does, uh, Sergeant Johnson's doing a fantastic job, I mean, he's, he has been, um focusing all of his attention on this, and then now coming up on a a week out, a little less than a week out, obviously, it's a, uh, it's a big stress for him.
And actually, one of your comments kind of segues to this, Mike, the second, and only other comment I was gonna offer, which is, you mentioned the post-commission, which obviously, that didn't exist when when the uh town and the department made the decision to become uh accredited back in twenty-eighteen, and uh so now that the post-commission exists, and there's now, they've kind of raised the bar for every, um you know, police department across the Commonwealth, uh, how, and and I was glad to hear you say that the post-commission is is obviously paying attention to like, things like, uh, you know, you said certification, uh, and trying to have some, um hopefully consistency or commonality of what the standards are, cause I, you and I, we've both worked in public service so many, you know, decades, like you know that you layer on like one set of standards and with another set of standards, and they don't always tie, and then you obviously comply with the higher of the two, but but sometimes state agencies, they don't aren't coordinated among themselves in terms of like, there's standards that are set by one that are very, very bureaucratic, and then by another that are like similar but not quite the same, so I wonder, do you have an observation as to with like the post-commission requirements, it's your department's subject to, and the accreditation, or is there commonality there to where you guys doing what what you do every day, like checks both boxes, or or are you basically now doing it twice?
Yeah, I mean, I know the commission's made up of, you know, mostly law enforcement professionals, um, including the assessment teams, are are, you know, members of of police departments from chief all the way down to um patrol officers, um, I I believe Mass Municipal has a seat at the table, um, with the commission and and the the Chiefs of Police Association do. So they really understand the nuts and bolts of of how how we operate, how we should operate. Um, I think with the post-commission, um, I I I think they're just the position is probably to try to standardize uh all the departments um to to meet meet those standards.
Mike, so, there's a lot of demand here, and and I'm not questioning this at all, just because ultimately, if you had to boil it down to, you know, to to fifty words or less, what are the upsides of, for you, you know, for your department of the accreditation?
Can you just repeat that, Rick, you came in kind of quiet.
Oh, sorry, okay, um, I wonder if my microphone is, can you hear me okay?
Much better, yep.
Yeah, okay, um, I'm just curious if you can, in in fifty words or less, um, we're not counting, but, um, can can you boil down what are the benefits to your department of the accreditation?
Yeah, I I copied you that time, Rick, thanks, um, so we're we're meeting professional standards, and and I think this is a matter of um liability at the end of the day. Um, obviously, the department deals with um a lot of um high-risk, high-stakes things, um, and at times, that comes with um with um involvement with uh liability, so I I think that this is something that is important for us to uh to maintain. Um, again, it's a lot of work, and we definitely want to be focusing everybody's energy where it's the most efficient. Um, but uh I I think at the end of the day, this is, this is a great standard for us to uh achieve, um, and I think that uh it's it's well worth um focusing on throughout the uh the future of the department.
Yeah, thanks.
Great, uh, let me jump ahead to general discussion, I didn't read the review of the contract. So, um, can you pull that up?
Yes.
So did you want to just, in general, talk about this particular form of the contract and, you know, what you're hoping to accomplish with it?
Yeah, yeah, um, so, early on, um, when I I met with the board, the last last meeting I attended, um, I talked about how, um, several of the the chiefs that utilize Atlantic Cataldo, um, were looking to have a lot more discussions about the services and and the the needs for the particular communities, so Salisbury, Newburyport, and West Newbury utilize Atlantic in our area, um, and we wanted to make sure, similar to the discussion with accreditation and and changes throughout time, um there have been a lot of changes throughout the the Massachusetts State Treatment Protocols, which are sort of the regulations that, um, EMS and first responders and you know, firefighters need to uh to to meet. So we wanted to to sort of standardize some of the language between the communities, um, to make sure that we, as the fire chiefs, and also the 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 boots on the ground um, were covered for s- for several of the changes that have occurred, um, a lot of the language in the initial, um contract, I was good, but I I just wanted to be sure that we were covering, um, all of those topics in in the contract as well as we could, um, based on some of the changes and some of the needs specifically for West Newbury. Um, we weren't looking at this at a- any type of approach to regionalize, um, uh, the service, but because it's a regional provider, we wanted to be sure that, uh the towns, um, had at least the coverage if needed, um, so for instance, um just take So inspections of the trucks, so down on, um to section G, um, it talks about equipment and radio communications and ambulances, supplies, so those are all things that are important um, to make sure that A, we can communicate with them, um there's equipment that they should be providing us during certain unique situations, um so again, we just wanted to make sure that the the language was in line with the s- the changes to the state, um, protocols. The um next section down three talks about personnel, um, again, there's there's been changes at the state level as to what an ALS ambulance can have for staffing, what a BLS needs to have for staffing. We wanted to make sure it was clear, um, because if it's not there and somebody new takes over, if I'm not the fire chief tomorrow, uh, we want to make sure that things are still running as smoothly as possible for the citizens of West Newbury, um. I know there was discussion early on about transporting of patients, um, cause the the contract that we have, that that, um the West Newbury contract talked about a radius, um, what's important to know about transporting of patients is, um, they're gonna go to the the most appropriate, um, facility for their particular, um injury or illness, um, so for instance, if, um, if I'm a stable patient, if if I have a a medical episode and I'm I'm deemed stable, um, they can transport me to a facility that's, you know, beyond a a reasonable distance. A lot of times, that's done through medical control at a local hospital, um, because they're required um, based on the type of treatment, where the person needs to go, and the facility that's that's uh appropriate for them or able to take them, um, that's forever-changing, um, based on different uh facilities that some have capabilities, some don't, that's that's forever-changing due to probably a lot of staffing, um, concerns, so again, we just want to be sure that when we're transporting, when we're treating a a an individual in the field, um, and they're being transported to the the most appropriate facility that we have, um, we have that outlined.
Have either of the other two towns, um, signed and implemented this contract, or are they in the same stage we are?
No, so, uh, Newburyport had signed, um, with them, um, early on, um, Salisbury just signed. Uh, I think the night we met with, um, Cataldo, they had, they had agreed to sign. Um, I met with Rob today, we had, we had had some follow-up discussions while I was away, um, but we got to meet today to talk about, um, some of the uh concerns that he had. Um, I wasn't very clear on the educational section, um, we talked about that today, and, um I wasn't looking for them to necessarily train or certify any of my staff, um, you know, to to any sort of uh EMT or paramedic level, what I was hoping for was opportunity to do what's referred to as continuing education, EMS credits, um to offer to some of my staff, um, all the firefighters in town, um, they pay for their own EMT training, and uh, so that's an out-of-pocket pocket cost, they also, um, have to pay for continuing education, um, every so many years to maintain this their status. So my, um my intent was to at least have an opportunity for them to take some recertification training through, um, their training facility, um, in Newburyport, um, free of charge.
Any questions?
So, so was that was that settled, that question settled, Mike?
Yeah.
About the 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 training at that free of charge?
Yep, I, um I'll provide, Angus, I will provide you with, um, what we discussed today with the with the markups, just so you have it, um.
That sounds great, Chief, yeah, that was my same question, is, yeah, I think it sounds like there's agreement, uh uh, between between you and Cataldo, which is great, and so, yeah, once, uh, we'll just get the make sure the language is mutually agreed, and then, uh, I mean, I'll say, I think this is just on its face, such an obviously stronger contract and more detailed and more complete, the one that, you know, had been put forward for extension is one that I think is substantially unchanged going back many years in the town, and so I really want to thank you for, you know, working with your counterparts and and neighboring communities to you know, help help us toward a more, uh, moderate and moderate and complete contract, so like we'd laid out in the, you know, conversations we've had, once the, you know, once you and Cataldo basically are in agreement, you know, I think, just bring it to the board, and if they have further questions, you know, obviously, they'll, they'll jump in, but I think it's, uh, I think this is helpful tonight to to get your, uh uh, kind of guidance on what qualitative, what about this contract is better, and, uh, but it certainly, you know, has a very kind of complete and professional, it seems to cover a lot of things, whereas the older contract is more you know, it's a little more chunky in terms of this big paragraphs instead of like a more, this seems to have to become more modern and, uh you know, complete contract.
Yeah, we were, we were putting a lot of work into this, cause because of COVID, there were a lot of changes to staffing all across the board, uh, but EMS really took a a pretty significant hit. Um, and we've had a lot of discussions regionally with not only the private ambulance companies, but the municipal fire, um, services that are done in our area. Just really looking for ways to improve that level of service, um, because that's primarily what we do, um, you know, police first responders and fire um, primarily respond to medical calls, um, that's, you know, we do about don't quote me on it, but I want to say it's about a hundred and seventy-seven calls a year are, um, medically based, um, from being handled by the dispatcher, who is EMD-trained, all the way to the ambulance transporting the person, um, to the hospital, but there was a section in there, um that talked about, um, you know, uh, employees of the town, so for instance, if and this, this does happen at times for doing a fire training, and it's hot, and one of the firefighters is overcome, they get transported to the hospital, this contract stipulates that they're not gonna bill the town for that transport cost, so, um things like that, we we felt were important, um, to have in place, cause it's just a unique design of public safety, quite frankly.
Right, Chris, did you have a question?
I have three.
Is that?
The first one, has this or or will this document be reviewed by legal?
Yeah, once, once, uh, we get, uh, you know, the chief's, uh uh, okay that he and Cataldo think it's in in good form, uh, yeah, we would send this off to KP and and, uh, make sure they look at it before it's brought to you.
I'll be asking that question a lot.
No, Chris, I think that's a great idea, eh, honestly, on the fire side, there are a lot of resources that we have that can provide us, you know, uh, uh, one or two reads. That can provide us, you know, uh uh one or two reads uh and some some recommendations, but at the end of the day. Um, I I think that's going to be the best, you know, we talked about liability on the police side for for accreditation, but um I I I. I think that would be um most helpful.
And two questions within the contract, one is under the agreement, item one, the term and termination. It says to provide a terminated disagreement without cause by one hundred eighty days written notice. That seems very risky of me if the town are not able to secure another vendor in that time frame. So maybe the wording might want to be, have something saying, or until which point the town can secure. Another ambulance vendor, just seeing I'm left without it. Then to that.
Yeah, did uh uh I'm just looking at my note here, I wonder if I did that backwards. So what what I was thinking, cause I think the original one was at sixty, was it sixteen sixty? I'm looking back here, I'm sorry.
But regardless of what the timeframe would be, I think there has to be a failsafe for the town who've secured another vendor.
No, I agree, a- and I I want to be, I want to make sure that we have obviously the best advantage if they were to ever pull out. Um, cause it's not that, it's not that easy to create an ambulance program, not nor is it cheap and um. It's um. You know, there there's there's not a whole lot of options on the private side um. So I I made a note on that, Chris, and I'll make sure that that gets um corrected.
Then my last question, hopefully, under operational requirements, item D, uh hospital selection, which you referenced. Earlier and it says the provider, being the ambulance carrier, will be solely responsible for selection of the hospital. I would think that the the person, the patient, whatever I call them, I also have some input on that too. That is to say, if there are two hospitals that are almost equidistant apart. That the person laying on the stretcher in that ambulance should say, no, I don't want to go to that hospital, I want to go to this one. Not, I don't know if the provider has a vested interest one way or another, but it should not be solely their decision, I would not think.
We we did talk about that today, um, cause he he recalled that question coming up at the the previous meeting. Um, and and we used the example of Main Street in West Newbury, um if you need to go to a a trauma center. Your options are Portsmouth right now as a um a a proper trauma center uh to receive a patient. But if the incident occurred at the Groveland West Newbury line, Lawrence General may be closer or. Equidistant, um and and what? The challenge with this, and we hear this an awful lot, and I've experienced this personally, um it's. It's easy to say, I'm fine, I'm okay with us going that distance, but. Things can happen rapidly, um and and that's when it becomes a challenge, um. I know, I know that's not the, probably the answer you're looking for, but it's um, it it's. We had a, we had an incident where there was. A tree that came down and and had to reroute the ambulance um during a storm. And obviously that was a pretty unique situation that. Only had one choice, which was now we have to go either the the long way around or we need to to choose a different location. Um, there's medical control, which are um what's what's done through the region. And oftentimes, if there's um a a a question to go, not against the the protocols, but to uh. Ask for, you know, sort of an option, um oftentimes they they have to run that through medical control. So it's uh, it 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 happens a lot and it's and it is a challenge. Um, and it's usually because there's, there's a request for really specific um types of treatments or um physicians that are just known. To the patient, cause a lot of patients are are very um, um especially if they're in a critical state, um they uh.
Let's go to the point if the patient has a position in a certain facility they want to go to.
Yeah.
You know, that that should be a consideration, or there could be facilities, I tell you, there's no way I'm going to. If I'm in the ambulance, you're telling me to take me there, I'm going to roll out the side door on the next turn.
It, yeah, it's like I said, uh my my son had a a medical uh episode and um I was. Dead set against where I knew we were going to have to go, um and um. It it was, uh, yeah, it was, it was not, uh, it's not easy, but um. I can, I I can provide you with some backup documentation from the from the regs. Just um to see if that helps and I'm more than happy to to bounce some stuff off of um.
You know, you have regs, I'm thinking, I really, you know, if you had a person laying on the stretcher in the back, you really don't care about the regs if you want to go to your hospital with your doctor.
But but the people providing care are medically off, I mean, if the patient's under their care, so they they don't have to be the one to choose. I mean, it can't be an option, what if, what if they choose a further way?
Suppose I had a heart issue, go in there, I got a doctor in Portsmouth. They said, we're going to take you to to Boston, so I, no, I want to go to Portsmouth, that's my doctor, is that? Boston's not going to help me.
Well, we're we're definitely going to take you to uh to Portsmouth.
I I think.
This this clause is about separating West Newbury from the decision of which hospital goes to.
Says the provider will be solely responsible.
It also says provider will follow state regulations and local protocol, what I'm saying is from our standpoint, the West Newbury standpoint. This is merely separating us from that decision, that's really important to have in there, we're not part of that decision, we don't want to be part of that decision.
Yeah, I think what Chris is trying to do in our respective respect. Of somebody who actually has the of the of the the patient.
Yeah.
And obviously, I mean, our. As the select board, our concern is primarily. About West Newbury, because that's what we've committed to be on this board for, but we still have to think about the individual patients and and. What what do they care about? What's important?
Right, but you also want to separate yourself from being part of that decision.
So you can do that to different paragraphs, say West Newbury is not responsible, I'm saying the patient should have some input, because literally. If I'm lying on the floor, and they come in my house and they say they will take you to this hospital, I go, no thanks, see you later.
Yeah, just clarify what lo- local.
That's, that seems to me to be the answer, is this, if there's a local protocol that provides that. You know, the provider is, at the end of the day, responsible, but will take into account the patient, right, anyhow.
Yeah, so it may well be, you don't know, it's mostly by how.
All right.
Yes, I do, well, well received, thank you, thank you.
Hopefully that made you feel better.
Little bit of water and we'll see, maybe rest, hopefully.
I would throw some hops and barley with that water too.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you, thanks for your time.
All right, I have a need and request for reappointment of James Blackford, she's.
So this is one of these odd things that that shall not happen before July fifteenth, nor after August fifteenth. So you can, you can get used to this being an annual appointment, this off cycle with the other appointments that you do, because. Just like I was saying a few minutes ago, you know, one state losses this, another says that, so. So this will be something we'll pencil in for basically every year between.
Mid-July.
Mid-July, you know.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Blackford as the chief elections officer of town of West Newbury. Backed it from July eighteen, twenty twenty fourth, to July thirty, twenty twenty five.
Uh, I have a B as request for an increase in the annual senior tax workload. But.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I think I can, my wife participates in the program, so does that create a conflict of interest? I mean, I know.
I don't think so, I mean, either any of us could as well.
I think what he's saying is that she does currently participate.
She receives an economic benefit rate program, right?
That's a good question to ask.
Well, I know when I was on school committee, when they talked about health insurance, you couldn't participate, even though I took health insurance, you could discuss that because it was the whole group, not individual, but. I just making sure I can.
I think, you know, the right answer is 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 always disclosure, and uh while formally that would be, you know, a. A filing form with the town clerk of an appearance of conflict, my opinion is that that there's no conflict that rises to that level. I think your disclosure here tonight verbally, um. In my opinion, is it kind of insulates you from someone asserting, I mean, you know, if you want, you you, any one of you who are eligible for the program. Or family members that are eligible for the program could file a disclosure, I I doubt that that happens in. In the other three hundred fifty cities in town, so I think it's commend, no, I commend you for for bringing that forward, but I I don't think uh. You need to worry about it.
We're not going to be telling them, yeah.
Can we change it to twenty thousand for you?
So um, board of assessors waiting on this, or no?
I don't believe so, I, you know, when this email that came in on uh. Last last, and I I got it Monday when I was back from vacation, that was the first I'd seen it or heard of it, so I, it seemed to me like a a pretty uh. Routine request, so I just put it on the agenda, but but I have no idea, I mean, I'm seeing assets were copied on it, so they're aware, but. As far as the, like the chief assessor, but as far as the board of assessors, I have no idea if they've been asked to lay in this at all.
I want to go. I want to go to this, when was the last time it increased? And it started out at fifteen hundred? Doing that.
I don't know.
I don't know that.
I know it's been fifteen hundred for a long time, I'm not sure that's what started it.
Any issues or concerns with this?
I, I don't, um, it all seems to me that the towns are saving the service when it's, when the work is done and. Um, my guess is that the five hundred dollar increase. And some course way corresponds to, you know, change, changes in that. Normal compensation rates and and uh and cost of living and all that kind of stuff, fifteen hundred dollars ten years ago than. Did that.
My question would just be from the assessment, would it be what impact this has on?
Twenty five hundred bucks a year.
Okay.
I say that because it's a chart that shows. Call it, call it ten thousand dollars a year.
Well, the only way to look at it is, is you, your participants have been costing you about seven hundred and fifty dollars on average per year. So it's not even clear that you're gonna incur an additional expense.
Yeah, a lot of people aren't maxing out. Oh, not as close, yeah.
Yeah, so I just do it based on a total dollar amount, but again, I don't think it costs anything, cause.
Fifteen dollars an hour, you're getting cheap labor. We could be doing, we should be doing work the night. Oh, sorry.
Only in China, Rob, not here.
Hi, do you have any question? Rick, do you have any question?
Sure, I uh, I move that we um approve the increase. Um, the senior tax write-off from fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars, the the maximum allowed.
Okay, for the discussion. On there.
All right.
Right, the next item is G. Uh, in a way, I mean, I am, the Yellow Street Bridge. So we are being asked this.
So this is the same document you've seen before, but it occurred to me that that you actually hadn't voted it. Monday night, it sure would be nice to say, this is endorsed and and formally voted by the board, so it's the same document you've seen over the past couple of months.
It says fifty fifty.
It says fifty fifty, yeah.
So we'll make a motion to approve and hit to get some agreement with Newbury Board, well, the bridge construction project as presented. Second.
For the discussion.
Not on that vote, but the agenda item does have discussion on Monday's meeting, so after you vote, uh, let's keep that talking, you know.
All in favor?
Great, thank you. So obviously, uh, you know, the meat, the full council will meet Monday, um, you, I I think you probably got the memo. Uh, I sent out yesterday afternoon, Rick might not have seen it, because you were just coming back today from Canada, but. I'd sent a a brief two page memo out to the council yesterday and got confirmation promptly back from the council president that it was timely for their packet. Uh, so it'll be part of the council's packet materials on Monday night. Uh, that sets out a couple of illustrative uh procurement calendars. Uh, that basically are intended to uh kind of balance various interests of securing funding. You know, and uh frankly, have contingency plan, I didn't elaborate on that in the written document. Cause I didn't think that was going to, you know, the need to do that, but, but basically providing that if if for whatever reason the bids come back. And show that there is a shortfall, whether that's because Newbury Board commits the fifty fifty and the bids come in high. Or Newbury Board doesn't commit to the fifty fifty, but one way or the other, there's a funding shortfall, I want to make sure we get bids back. Before the fall town meeting warrant is closed, to at least preserve the option, if you choose to, to bring an article to the fall town meeting for supplement of funding.
And my question, based on the schedule, I can't find it right now.
And it's not, it was sent out as a supplemental packet, so it's not uh part of this one.
In this mess somewhere, the ARPA funding, does that have to be?
Under contract by December thirty first. Correct.
Okay, that was.
It's got to be expended by uh December thirty first of twenty twenty six.
Okay.
And um, and what time does the meeting start?
I believe it's at seven, I'm I'm ninety nine percent sure it's at seven PM. I know their typical council meeting agendas have, you know, seventy topics, so I I, well, to us, this is the, you know. Front center. It's very probable we'll be, you know, sitting around for a while, I've been to attend in person, yes, it's.
So might we post that, maybe?
Uh, we would have had to post it today, since it's Monday night, I think, so. But you're not deliberating, there's, you're gonna, you know, even if a forum is a attending, you're you've you, you're not deliberating, you're not taking action, so. In general, if if you'd asked me that question, you know, six hours ago, I would have said, yeah, let's post just to err on the side of caution, but since we didn't, it's. It's not required, we we often do just to err, you know, just to be. As uh, you know, transparent as possible, but.
It'd be surely inappropriate for us to be deliberating in their suite.
So, and I also really don't have any any insight as to whether to expect this to be voted Monday, or whether this can be continued to multiple meetings. If I had to handicap it, I would say, well, Monday is probably less favorable than having a a good discussion Monday. And have to continue it, because while the three counselors who referred it from the committee to the council. Have have had a few meetings on this over the last several months and have both familiarity, there's eleven counselors, not three. And some of those eleven, whether uh willful or not, this might be the first time they're really hearing about this.
So were the people that asked questions at the meeting, were other counselors, because some, they were clearly didn't understand some of the.
I don't know, I, my notes, anytime I didn't know who the speaker was, I just put, like, I I wrote down what they said, but I didn't know who who the speakers were. Uh, it was the three members of the committee and then the council president were the ones that I uh. But but other people, other voices on Monday's meeting, I didn't know who they were.
So what time should we get there?
I don't know, so, I mean, do they go in order?
I I assume so, oh, one, one very, very, very helpful, we, what time should we get there before seven PM? Got some very, very good insight uh from a coworker who who used to be a. Very good insight, I'm glad I thought to say this. They do not allow public comment during their meetings, other than during the public comment period at the beginning of the agenda. So now, if if during their discussion they have questions, they may call on me or or any of you, or or Wayne, or John Eric, or whomever. And and they probably will, but in terms of public comment, they will, this is not a public hearing, this is not something that. Will allow public comments, so if anyone wants to make comments, the time to do that would be at the beginning of the meeting. During the public comment period.
So, the email blast that you sent out, did you make that clear, that public comment?
It didn't, because I just learned that in the huddle uh yesterday morning.
So I I don't know if people are planning to go, but um, it might be worth just following up and seeing if you intend to make a comment that. Will be at the the beginning.
Right, yeah, I don't know, yeah, maybe, we can talk about, I don't know if I want to do another email blast on it, or maybe we'll do a reminder. And in that offer, yeah, that's a good idea, uh, it was just a reminder on this meeting and in terms of council protocol.
And expecting citizens to go, which is, that's the hope.
I would think so, there's, you know, we've gotten many, many uh dozens of letters of support, and a lot of people feel real strongly, so. I would think, but but we were very intentional in how we worded the website post on Tuesday to not. Advocate for people, we said if you have comments, but we very specifically did not say. If you wanna write a letter of support, you know, we're not putting our thumb on the scale, uh. So, uh but yeah, we we hoped residents will show up, but I also, you know. I don't know the dynamic with a full eleven-member council, and I don't want something that could inadvertently like be counterproductive.
That's my concern, is that they haven't even gotten up to speed on it yet, before the meeting starts, they have a half dozen people jamming it down their throats, doesn't feel good.
That would be at the meeting this on Monday was that it's, you know, West Newbury clearly. Seeing some benefit from this a lot more than Newbury Port, so people a bunch of West Newbury residents saying we want this.
Disagree with, I don't know what made the comment, but I wouldn't agree with it.
Well, I think there's some validity, I mean, it's more use going that way.
Newbury Port residents have got to see beautiful West Newbury a lot easier.
I'm just saying, that was one of the moments.
Did you answer the question, what time to show up?
Before seven, you don't wanna be there.
Yeah, and and the meeting does start at seven.
Yeah, I thought it was seven, sorry. That's how.
I can't make Monday.
So if I had to handicap the odds, I I think a vote Monday is probably not in our favor. Because in my view, the odds of a successful vote Monday are probably slim. I think if they have a good discussion and refer, you know, two weeks out for their meeting and maybe a meeting after that, that's not a bad thing, uh.
Angus, don't they generally like to do that though?
No, I well, I don't know, I can't speak to this council, cause I haven't ever been to the, I maybe went to the one other meeting, I have no know. But other council forms of government that I've worked with, and I've worked with many. Typically, don't put something on the agenda until it's ready for a vote, that's the whole committee process, you know, and then the committee refers it to the council. Uh and then once it gets to the council, they 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 often don't have like two or three, whereas like a select board might have two or three or four meetings. It's in my experience with council forms of government, that's not it, the committees are really where they do the roll up the sleeves and 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 rattle. And then it gets to their committee and it's more like. You know, so I have no insight to Newbury Port, but that's what I've seen in other uh council forms of government.
And all three of the subcommittee members agreed with the fifteen fifty?
They voted three nothing to refer it, I heard comments that would suggest that.
I thought it's set up at the.
At the terms written, yeah, yeah, I think that's fair to say, and we heard one counselor who who was very skeptical of the project generally, but. But still expressed, you know, he said the cap in his mind would be a million dollars, and that's what we're asking for, so that was very favorable, he was. Clearly skeptical of the project, yet still willing to, or express willingness to vote for a million dollars, so he he was saying like if this isn't a. Fine check and if there's change orders, he wanted to have assurance that. Exactly, exactly, so but I thought that was very promising. But we certainly don't want to count our chickens on this one.
But is somebody, I just realized I can't make it, is somebody from West Newbury, I think the point that has to get hammered in that. It's now or never.
Oh, they know, yeah, we'll be there, we'll certainly make that point, yeah.
Those grants go away, and that's a lot of money, man, that city.
I mean, I don't know if everybody has the time to read the entire set of documents, you know, the letter of all record that you provided.
Yeah, of course.
But it was pretty clear and and there.
Might not hurt us to state at the meeting.
We will, we will, yeah, we I I'll certainly either whether it's Wendy or me, one or the other of us will will make a statement during public comment, a very. Very cordial, very high road statement, uh. But just to, you know, and and same with the the tenor of the letter I sent yesterday, very, you know. How lucrative this has been, what a collaborative process, and how exciting it is that we're right on the verge of.
It has become what it's gotten to a really good place.
I think the council president and certainly the chair of the Public Works and Safety Committee, they've been straight shooters, they've been a little good, I think, you know, we've had some really. Really cordial, very.
Aren't they required to post their agendas?
Okay.
I do know Andrew Levine is, I got an auto response from him, I know he's out of town, so maybe the whole thing falls apart.
All right, while you're looking for that.
It it's not on there. It's not only the agenda, but they're pretty good about having their meeting materials posted, you know, as well, so I would have thought by now there'd be like.
Especially because you reminded them of asking when it has to be in, in order to make the package. Stay tuned on that one.
Well, I mean, the the meeting is posted, so it's not the the agenda, so is the requirement, the agenda be up for you to ask for?
All right, I didn't do any review of the federal awards policy uh for adoption, I don't know if you saw, you know.
So I printed up hard copies of the markup, I have four copies and Rob, you're 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 welcome to have one of these too, uh. This is, these are all. I'd say ninety five percent of my markups are really non-substantive, a lot of them are just capitalizations or, you know, consistency. Uh there were a couple that were marginally substantive, uh so yeah, I went through it very, very closely, uh.
But the bottom line, we don't need to vote on this.
Correct, yeah, so. Yeah. So, so uh but this way you have, you know, kind of the changes I made from from Jenny's draft. Uh as I said, but you know, since today, the initial draft was actually received from the auditor. So, you know, every change we made is still within, and and she had made some changes based on other things anyways, is. Uh but yeah, you can definitely, as I was going through this, it definitely, you know, you've heard us say, and especially, you know, people like Jenny or before her Stephanie, like. You know, dealing with federal money is is a whole other thing, this helps kind of understand what that means, like in real terms. And so one of the things that I of why I favor. Having my office promulgate this rather than the board is, as of right now, our chief procurement officer hasn't been asked to review this, so while I'm. Going to assume that she's gonna say, yeah, we're already doing this stuff. I don't wanna just, oh, here's the, and she's like, oh, we didn't, we didn't know that, and. You know, then I gotta bring it back to you, I'd rather, you know, I wanted to get it approved, so we can get it to the auditor and say, yeah, this is our policy, but. If when Kate and Barker reads it, she's like, oh, we didn't know, for instance. The HVAC unit we bought was federal money, we gotta put a sticker on that to say it's supposed to be, there's just all this fine print. That that uh, so yeah, I like this idea of, you know, I'm the chief financial officer, I've. Put it out there, but then, you know, if we find there's something that we wanna tweak in a week or two weeks. I don't need to, we don't need to go through all these steps, so that's basically the idea.
Any comments or questions that we might get?
Yeah, my only comment is, you know, it's funny, I look back at that um financial operating procedures, which I. Agree with and voted to, you know, for at the time, but the one thing it doesn't say is that the select board is supposed to be kept apprised. Of course, you will do that, but 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 it doesn't say anywhere that the select board should be kept advised of changes.
Yeah, and that would be an easy fix and a good and a good fix, cause you're right, I would do it, but it's something that should be. Like, you know, we we on our town website, you know, once once these financial policies are approved, we we post them to the uh. Bylaws and policy section, uh and in fact, you know, a lot of the financial policies we've adopted over the years. Which you'll recall, you know, these, the board has voted, because, you know, they either preceded this or. You know, we kind of, when I started, we were still in that mode of like the board voting everything, so uh. But there's still another, you know, a few more of these that we're looking to get done, like the, you know, procurement conflict of interest and so forth, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's not the immediate.
No, no, but it's a good, uh I think it's it's good practice that, you know, upon. Adoption or promulgation or change in policy, that should be promptly. Provided to the select board, the finance committee, most of the website, you know, that way it's kind of transparent without bogging down. You know, where it really kind of nuts and bolts things, that's really just documenting.
Angus, just quick question, you uh on page fourteen, you uh struck out all our RFP. Sides queues must be reviewed and approved by the town managers before being issued.
Right.
Does it make sense to make sure that the chief procurement officer does that?
They're already.
They're they're named in here, but it doesn't call, it it says that they can actually delegate out, I'm just wondering if they should review all.
Uh well, that was actually what I suggested to Jenny, so we just changed town manager, we should procurement officer, but she said that that because it's kind of. That they're the one creating them.
But no, it allows them.
So so what one of the reasons is, you know, you heard me say earlier tonight. This policy, once finalized, becomes something the auditor audits us against. So take the page school HVAC, that was procured. Completely legally under th- under, not under thirty D, under a different procurement statute in Massachusetts that. Is allowed because it is a clean energy project, you'll recall that we brought in uh B two Q, they handled the procurement. They hired the vendor, that's all on the up and up, that's all consistent thirty D, I don't want the auditor asking me. Where is the documentation that you, the town manager, approved the RFP for that HVAC unit? I didn't, we hired B two Q, they didn't, so that's.
I'm not I'm not repeating that the town manager, all I'm saying is that that. It it may make sense to make sure that the chief procurement officer must review and approve.
Yeah, they they would.
But 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 up here, it allows them to delegate out, so all I'm saying is. It makes some sense to reaffirm that nothing will go out, that the chief procurement officer has reviewed it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just in in practical terms, I'm I'm actually quite hands-on with a lot of procurement. Uh and and certainly anything of any kind of out of the norm, like like the, you know, any, I could list a number of them. Me and Caitlin Barker work really closely, and I do in fact review them, but that's different from creating an auditable standard that I review them. Uh whether to your point, Rob, we don't have anyone in this small town that 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 the CPO would delegate to, so. I I hear your point, and you're not, you're not wrong, but I think it's not really. Uh it's it's not, there's no exposure there, because there is no, it's not like there's an assistant chief procurement officer, and it's not like there's a. Administrative assistant, the chief procurement officer, like that office is a, so there is no procurement that takes place without. Yes, CPO, in practice, and that's how it's been for, uh yeah, through Caitlin and and Wayne before her, you know.
All right, I think that was good.
So we'll not vote?
I I didn't need a request to reallocate ARPA funds previously, but currently that one's spent, so we have ninety five hundred. Um from the grant consulting services to the unallocated and sixty three twenty seven from the page school HVAC to unallocated. We have to vote those separately or?
I I would say separately. And this is all in the spirit of the documentation that is strings attached to these federal lines. Uh I think that's on page eighty six, yeah. So and I would say, you know, if you just follow the language on the agenda in terms of the motion, and then. I don't actually know if we have a form for your signature on these, but if we don't, we will, so that that gets into James files and she has a paper trail. To show that that's uh put back into the unallocated bucket.
Okay, so make a motion, just exactly this is on the agenda, motion to reallocate ninety five hundred dollars from the ARPA. Grant consulting services to the ARPA unallocated. Make a motion uh to reallocate six thousand three hundred and twenty seven dollars from the page school HVAC's steam replacement. To the unallocated ARPA.
Next item is to approve ARPA funds for the replacement or repair of the Sage Center HVAC.
Yeah, so um I I I'm not disagreeing with this at all, I I if if, you know, we talked about it, there was a potential that the unit would. Would fail, and clearly it's in a state of progressive state of failure right now. Based on what Brian said, I I guess um. In the in the forum, although confused, says under description of project. Where it says the unit is currently operating using only one. And, oh, is that Brian Richards?
Yeah, yeah, he had put in a the the brand name carrier. And then said to me like, oh, I we we're doing a, it might not actually be a carrier, and so we'd already, we were already on. Version two, so I said, just cross it off at initial.
Okay, good, because that um that was my next.
Yeah, cause we don't want to presuppose it's gonna be a certain manufacturer.
So my question, wasn't this before us? At the Springtown meeting, it was a number more like ninety thousand, I think?
It it was a much bigger number, and I don't remember what it was, I was I was wondering the same thing, and um so. I don't know why, why there's a substantial difference now, and and it's great if it's actually that, I think lots.
Unless you wanna make sure, too, you're talking apples and apples, too, I mean, quite honestly, it's forty five grand a piece of junk, I'd rather spend ninety and get the right one. So I know he's he says in here he's gonna get out of bids, but I think. Are we looking to allocate the money tonight?
Uh I it'd be, well, I do know he's he's gonna need to go through, they're gonna need to solicit quotes. Uh they, I what I could do is, if it's the sense of the board that you're supportive of. The funding of projects from ARPA specifically, as opposed to wait for the fall town meeting, is uh you wouldn't have seen this, Rick, cause it was just an email Christine sent out. Christine Marshall sent out over today, related to today's ice cream social yesterday. But she basically said, we'll have to eat our ice cream quickly, because it's gonna melt, like that's that's the dynamic. So I know Brian's not looking to wait for an October vote, but but to your point, Chris. They're not gonna be signing a vendor agreement tomorrow, it's gonna take them a while to get quotes and so forth, so I think if the sense of the board is supportive of. Supporting the project, and I tell Brian and Caitlin Barker, go ahead and get quotes and then bring back the one you wanna do. Rather than this budget quote based on, and he did get a verbal quote for that amount.
I'd rather not vote a dollar amount, say, I'm on board with the concept, well, let's see where the bids come in, and then vote the appropriate dollar amount.
We're gonna slightly fat power now to cover what else.
Yeah, my. Uh my concern is by the time he gets his quotes, gets a vendor on board, we're gonna be out of the season for needing it anyways, I believe.
Well, one thing, there's this.
You don't have these things on the shelf and pop them up with a cup.
No, 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 what I mean is global warming, and we don't know how long it's gonna keep this on.
He did have this sentence toward the end of the narrative, it is recommended to add a heat pump to this unit for future use, which. He thinks, he told me, he thought would add about three grands to the unit, would really make it a much more multifunctional.
Yeah, I mean, Brian and I talked about this a few weeks ago, this was before, it was probably three weeks ago, before this uh first age compressor failed. Um and, you know, we had talked about, well, if if we were to, you know, replace with like kind. Then it would make sense for it to be a heat pump as opposed to being just an air conditioner, but the other thing that happens now is if it is gonna be a heat pump. We really ought to reach out to somebody like B two Q and make sure that given. So, you know, we have a new control system, and that's great, and and I did specifically ask B two Q, you know, just verbally, but I had more than one conversation with them. Um when the system was being backed out, um about, I acted about geothermal, you know, controlled geothermal. Um uh HVAC instead, but this is sort of a different system than what's on the current, and my guess is there won't be a problem. But we should understand what, if any, implications there are with replacing strictly an air conditioner on the roof. With a heat pump, and will we actually achieve the benefit, the heating benefit that you could get with a heat pump as opposed to um just an air conditioner? All the AC does is cool, the heat pump, I think, about cooling and heating, um but based on the mechanical configuration system here. Um but based on the mechanical configuration system here. Can we take advantage of that? I I have no idea. I'm sorry to complicate things, but I mean, that's.
Oh, again, it's better to do it right rather than. This is unfortunate in a nice cool summer, we had to have it go.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like Chris said, you know, you're not gonna get this in place. Uh in time anyways, so some.
You know, I I don't know, Rob, I mean.
No, given given that you want to look at the state.
Well, given that, I think otherwise, I think I think Brian would.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I I mean, I I I, you know, conceptually, I'm with it. We can't not have AC in that space. Um so we need to, we need to fix it post haste. Um but it's gonna take Brian a little bit of time to get more info and to and to get the number. Um and.
You should be able to do a heat pump system for above the same price that.
Right, it shouldn't be a huge error.
Right, it's all about what you said, whether the it would fit into the current existing job for it. It 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 which you'd expect.
What with whether the distribution system is right for what this.
Exactly, because distribution systems change.
And I have no knowledge. I don't, you know, I don't know. Yes, I have no idea.
So I think you're right, that he could, he could call two or three people and have within a week, he could have a a resolution, but I. I I think it's just more complicated this than AC brings.
Looking to that. I mean, we don't need to try to work this.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, he's gonna include a heat pump.
Yeah, yeah, it's right in there, that's recommended, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would think. It would be better, I would rather have a favorable vote on the amount and tell Brian and Caitlin that, hey, if the best. Unit that comes in is above this, we we want to make sure we get the best unit, but to at least. Really give uh both. Both those two staff, but also I know Christine Marshall's tracking this vote, probably her vote. Like, there's a lot of people who are like, this is not great, I don't miss. So I think at least that that's. Yeah, I don't want to have lots of meetings tomorrow, Monday with staff explaining why they're.
I make a motion to use up to fifty five thousand dollars of ARPA funds.
I said up to forty five.
No, I said up to fifty.
Oh, okay.
Well, I want to have the window. If the heat pump costs more, if the boats come in slightly different, I don't want to have to come back. You've got the opportunity.
Okay, great.
So up to fifty five thousand dollars of ARPA funds for the uh AC unit and heat pump.
Um I I I'd like to make a friendly amendment and ask that. That the Energy Sustainability Committee kept in the loop on what's what's going on.
What does that mean?
To understand what type, I I just, I want to be comfortable that it's gonna be, this is integrating what we already have, you know, we've already. We've invested a fair amount in putting this control system in. Let's make sure, you know, if we get a heat pump, that we can actually make, take advantage of it. I have no idea who Brian. Will be working with for a vendor and I'm sure Brian has, you know, solid vendors that he works with, but you know.
I understand the concern I'm asking, you know. Practically, what will that look like? Is he gonna have to call a meeting for the?
Who in the Energy Sustainability Committee, you?
I I mean, or I'd be happy to work with Brian to talk to those guys again. I I don't want to be second guessing him. I don't want to be pretending to, but I just. You know, there isn't enough here for me to feel comfortable. That whatever's done is gonna integrate well with.
So you represent both of those committees, like board and sustainability.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm just, I feel like we need to let town staff do their jobs. I don't want to be like Michael managing them, you know? If you express that concern, can't Brian look into that and and confirm that it will work with the existing controls?
Sure.
Is that reasonable, Angus, or do you feel?
It is. I mean, as a practical matter, they're gonna, you know, Rick's, you you talked to Caitlin and Brian, like, I know you went. Canada, but generally just about almost every day.
Yeah, well, yeah, once.
I mean, a little better, to be fair, but but yeah. There's pretty great communication. So I I think there's, yeah, I think I think Wendy, you you put your finger on it, like referring to committee that. You know, you're talking.
Yeah, and and that and that was not the, that was not the right way to do it, but I I just, you know.
Yeah, we'll 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 keep you guys fully apprised as we get the quotes and and what the options are. Not, you know, we have to, the procurement officer. To a contract, but uh or pick a vendor, but yeah, we'll let you guys know and and get your input and we want to do what you want done. I mean, that's, I mean, clear about that. We just don't want to slow it down in order.
So do you think ten, I was gonna say sixty thousand, you think ten?
I'll see you sixteen, Reagan.
Yeah, I don't think you want to start throwing money too much. I mean, it's ten thousand dollars to do a forty eight thousand dollar project, so it's. Uh seven thousand extras.
Okay.
I mean, if they if they come in and they can get better units, another five thousand, they come back, we can always work on that.
Yeah, alright. Was there a second? I was second. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, thanks very much for um the cost of this federal single audit. Should be straightforward.
Make a motion to use five thousand dollar ARPA funds for the federal single audit.
No, minutes. Um I had a question on the second page of June twenty fourth. Item B. The second to last sentence, it says discrepancies between deadlines for establishing a plan. This is for the open space.
Open space.
Plan.
Oh, yeah.
Um I'm not sure what what discrepancies is talking about.
Well, actually, I think you had mentioned that there's. That we currently have a seven year plan, but there's some.
The statute of authorizes that.
A ten year plan, so.
It just discrepancy sounds like, you know, like two people were saying something different.
Yeah.
Um I don't know, that could just be.
Yeah, we can.
I didn't have any other comments that you could do?
I had a really simple one, uh under um B F, is it um? I don't think we've been interstate I thirteen going through town. I think it's Route one thirteen.
Some days it feels like an interstate, I gotta tell you.
Yeah, it's true.
When I get on my driveway.
Yeah.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve the message June twenty fourth is amended.
Sorry, all in favor? Alright. Um on the next one. The participants at the meeting, I don't understand this comment about Ross reviewed line items retroactively including the. You know what that means, Rob?
Yeah. I wouldn't word it that way, but Ross affirms that he was voting in favor of Paul.
But we all, you all voted together, right? Why even say that?
Uh because Jim, 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 uh. I believe we all voted together. Jim believes that we voted after Ross left the room.
I think I think that's correct.
I I don't think he can review and vote retroactively, I mean. Yeah, so.
Ross is on the opinion, Ross is on the opinion that he voted in favor, yes.
Well, either he voted or he didn't, yeah, so.
Maybe Jim yelled up in the hallway and then Ross.
Yeah, he did, he did. And Ross was out there, Tim guys here yelled, and Ross said, yeah.
I still think you strike a parting, I would agree.
Why wouldn't I word it that way?
I'm gonna strike if you were here.
Okay, um general discussion in B T A zoning.
Well, no, hang on.
What?
Make a motion to approve the message.
And also July ten twenty twenty five is amended. All good, all good.
Alright, bye. Alright, now we're done with this. Any students, where are you going on?
Yeah, I mean, I think that email kind of speaks for itself. Basically, the, you know, I think we had a good idea. Uh but the state basically drove a state through it. Um and so um.
Doesn't mean this can't be used elsewhere in town.
That means PR couldn't be a good idea, it couldn't be used elsewhere, but it's not gonna get to the MBTA community's compliance because of the requirement that. Uh you know, all of the units have to still, so it would be additive. It wouldn't, it wouldn't. Be like a scattered site approach, which was the concept, so.
I I found the phrasing of all this, I find the phrasing of all this to be kind of gaudy and gogish.
Welcome to the.
I'll join you. I've read it and I still don't know what I read.
I read it two or three times and then finally I think I really understood what you were conveying. I mean, not 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 that you were confusing, but you seemed to understand it. It took me a little bit to look through it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, what we thought, and I'll just use an example, that the church, you know, where where it's known that there's. Potential interest in, you know, let's say, and I'll I'll pick it up, let's say twelve units or eighteen, whatever the number might effect fit there. If that plus this plus that plus the other could have gotten to eighty seven units. You know, the way I described it to, you know, staff like that the planning huddle is. You're potentially stirring up or in fact will be stirring up a lot more neighborhoods. But it's something that from a policy standpoint, I I think had a real appeal because it's spreading it around rather than a single site with a with a. Very great increase in density. It's more like. A more uh rational land use planning approach. I think it would have been. Potentially, you know, would have created some challenges public process, but I think in the aggregate could have been something that people could have looked at and said, oh, that actually makes sense. Uh as it is, we we're really kind of back to uh what was uh on the table in the spring and and uh withdrawn. Uh.
But now we have some funds.
But now we have some funds. So that's really where the discussion now shifts is is how can those funds? Help uh, you know, be most helpful in advancing the MBTA community's compliance.
So I wonder if that could be a point of discussion when we need the planning board to talk about the H P P, maybe.
Yeah, that's, we've already had that dialogue and that that's expected for the for that meeting on on August sixth. And um you know, I think if we have some initial discussion tonight, just to to kick around your ideas, I know the planning board had had some discussion Tuesday night. Uh. Uh and that idea, will we come in when the two boards meet together, you know, we we jointly agree um. You know, I I refer to it in this email as a fiscal impact analysis. They they are defining it more broadly as a community impact analysis. Uh that would have fiscal impact, but also other other more qualitative factors, so. They'd like to see probably the lion's share of the funding go toward that. Uh uh I I emphasized at the meeting yesterday with staff, we're not looking to spend all this money. We're looking to spend.
What we need.
What we need. Right, so it's not like we're trying to program seventy five K. We're we're thankfully, we have that as needed, but we don't need this, you know, if we can spend twenty five K and get what we're trying to get, that's great. That's it's. So it's not about programming the use, it's about what are the needs that we have. I think some kind of. Community impact analysis, that's a pretty routine thing in other communities for major developments. There's lots of specialized consultants, very skilled at that. Uh you know, I think that makes a lot of sense. Uh the only additional thing that Sue Sue told me about uh yesterday from her meeting with Brian Knight with the planning board was. They would advocate to, in addition to that, have a continued uh, you know, contractual relationship with Dobson Flinker. So they can continue to be available to support the public process. So. Uh as far as what came out of Tuesday, that's planning board, I mean, it was those two ideas.
So who's gonna manage this project slash?
I think the the fiscal impact, I I mean, geez, I.
I mean, planning board or or you slash select board?
I think, I think I'd like to, like I'd like.
I think that's how it was intended.
Yeah, I think, I think. I'd love to, you know.
Yeah.
Do that, and I'm very comfortable with that, you know, been involved with those things for, you know, many years, so.
Alright, any initial thoughts on this?
Oh, no, I think the fiscal impact.
So will that look at schools as well?
Yes, yeah.
So what what are the other qualitative things that are typical fiscal?
I don't really know.
Yeah, that's a little squishy.
Yeah.
I would guess there's, you know, public safety.
But that's all, fiscal impact's gonna look at all of that. It looks at, you know.
No, that's what I, that's what I meant, is that.
Well, they were talking about a more qualitative or community.
Community impact analysis, which I don't, yeah, that that would.
Okay.
You know, I think that's, I'll talk to Sue more about like. Cause a fiscal impact analysis is gonna is gonna cover, you know, projected school kids, projected. Ambulance calls, public safety, all of the, all of the things.
And will that go with water?
Water too, yeah, yeah.
Right.
You know, it's funny, I I every time I think about, you know, so. I guess the term would be community impact. I think back to when we did the comprehensive plan. And which was, you know, which, I mean, it's twenty years ago, twenty three years ago, twenty four years ago, a long time ago, but um. You know, it was a great effort, it was a great product. But there were assumptions made in the end or, you know, conclusions in the end as to the growth of the population and how things are going to trend. And. My takeaway, um and what I see now, it's not shit. At all, close, um we did, we did.
Nobody disagree with us.
I I I knew you would, but I'm gonna say what I'm gonna say. And and you know, one of them was the change in population. And there was not a change in population, any anything close to what was projected. Um and and um. Uh you know, there was preservation of a lot of land and there were, there were a lot of really positive things that came out, you know, and and uh um. You know, uh uh. You know, preservation, land preservation style development, um. You know, there were, there were things that came out of it that were the positives, but I just, the one thing that's always struck me is their projections. My recollection, I haven't gone back and looked at it recently, but my recollection of what the projection were, the population change don't correspond to.
They said, they said, if the town does nothing, this is what will happen. They gave an action plan that the town could follow. They also said, if the economy turned. It would not hit that either. If the economy did turn. The town spent five million dollars acquiring open space properties to prevent a lot of that growth there. And we rewrote the zoning at the time to squeeze a lot of wood balls down. So it was a concerted effort. If you've done not.
I I I'm not saying, I'm not saying it wasn't a bad, I just, I I.
I think you don't read the document in its entirety. They said, if you do nothing, here it is. They gave you an action plan. And I'm not gonna say everything in the action plan got executed because of, you think this still would like to seem, i.e. the town center redesigning it.
Yeah.
But a lot of them were how you could stop a lot of this growth. Five million dollars of land bought us an awful lot of. Parcels and projects that would have otherwise been hundreds of houses.
Yeah.
So it was.
And what consequence of having. A higher projection than what actually happened, what consequences did that lead to?
Here. So we go all in.
Yeah, right, okay, there you go.
So um I I have just a question on how we spend this money. I mean. The idea of having Johnson and Flinker on our train or for PR, I mean, I'm not sure they're the best people for PR.
I agree.
Yeah, so I don't know if that, I mean, that would be a very touchy discussion, but.
Right, that's probably a good thing to huddle with, you know, a member of the board and with Sue ahead of. The joint meeting, but I I had the same thought, because I, they're there to, for designers, they did a really nice job with all that. They're not, we, we're, this is not any marketing effort and uh in terms of.
Very high stakes, we've got to make sure we do this right.
Yeah, yeah, in terms of uh. Public process, you know, especially where the design work is done. Like, there's others who I think are really, that that's more like what they do.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to talk to some communities that have successfully passed and see if they use Abern or maybe they didn't, just. I don't know if Newbury used anybody or they just um. Got out of founder before people realized we're voting on, that's what I heard.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Alright, so we we're gonna meet again, was meeting with planning board or no? Yeah, we meet the first, right? On the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we can maybe talk a little bit more about specifics.
Sure. That's great.
Alright, we did the ambulance, um I didn't see review recommended work and funding for River Road mitigation efforts.
Uh so we had, I think it's, you know, a really good meeting with C C R C last night, uh the. Uh River Road uh final report is now posted to their. Uh webpage, it hasn't yet gone out on an e-blast news announcement. Elisa's gonna, she's gonna be crafting. How that is gonna go. She's gonna send something tonight or in the morning. So you can expect to get that tomorrow in your e-blast, but it's already posted to the C C R C website that's. Uh but there's gonna, you know, they want a particular framing of it. Uh they did what I think was a very thoughtful kind of uh cover letter to the report, uh which basically. Both kind of highlights the work that was done, but also makes clear, make sure that people understand what the scope didn't include. Uh some of the things about uh. Uh you know, impact of uh increased precipitation on river flows. Groundwater, I think there were a couple of things that they really weren't part of the scope and they wanted to make sure that it was clear to the reader that. That as much as these projections are are uh pretty uh concerning, that they're not accounting for everything. So I think they did a nice job with that kind of cover letter. That's part of the post on the town site. So uh yeah, that that'll go out to the news announcements and the town uh. Uh Facebook page tomorrow, so you can expect that to. Bring some greater public attention to all the work that's been going on with this, uh just go to their. Page, um. The action grant. Uh so, yeah, here's the final report. And. So, yeah, this is what I'm referring to. So this is, you know, I think this is real nice. And then gets into the consultant, you know, the three hundred or three hundred sixty page. Reports. And they also updated, uh there's a slideshow with images. And there's one actually from just on Monday. Which got a call from dispatch on on Sunday that uh. There was a sinkhole. Next to the uh. Field. And so Monday morning, his crew was out filling the sinkhole and having gone through the slide show, let us see if we can find it. Yeah, here it is. Yeah, so. This was about sixteen inches deep. Uh so they excavated, backfilled, paved over, so it's pat. But the general, the approximate location of this, this is, yeah, so this is from Sunday.
Where in relation to the culvert is that?
Next to it, like. Right next to it, right next to where the guardrail ends on the uh eastern edge of like right there. Emphasizes the urgency of what we're trying to do here.
Right.
So uh.
We also wonder what uh what other things are farther. East on the road. You know, there are places where you go down the riverbank, you can see the hills, the the riverbank bleeding water. You know, which is from, well, that probably is right now, it's a bit so dry, but. It's less dry. You can see the riverbank, but we're bleeding water that is. Has to be coming underneath the road.
So this is, I'm gonna hand this out too, because this wasn't ready by the time your packet went out, but this is uh. One of the things that was reviewed at last night's CCRC meeting. And on the front page, it's this something that Christine Wallace put together. On the front page is the article that was approved a long ago. Uh you know, thing, uh just kind of the background on on the funding that was approved, but it's really the back page that I want to draw your attention to. These are, this is a product of uh, you know, some working meetings involving, you know, Christine and myself and Butch and um. A number of others on staff, uh who are others. These are how, these are kind of, kind of, so what we're seeing as. Tangible next steps and many of which are within. Uh staff capability, they're not things that any need any consult support. Uh and they're in some cases already part of work planning and work that's going on. So. Uh we wanted to start to have, you know, some kind of a. You know, to track like the various tendrils of this project. And uh so hopefully this is helpful. I'm happy to. Elaborate in any of these, we can talk about some of these at great length, but. Like just for, for example, on the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. Uh there's a specific uh, you know, approach that the state requires and I I summarized that and kind of set out like who's gonna do which one. And with the sole exception of the traffic counts, which we got confirmation yesterday that MBTC can, not only can they do that. And they're actively doing that for a different commercial vehicle exclusion for a different community of the region. But the best news of all is they can do it within our LTA hours. So it's not gonna have a dollar cost that'll gobble up some of our LTA hours, so. Uh but that's the only piece of the commercial vehicle exclusion that can't be done in-house. So, you know, it's not all gonna happen tomorrow, it'll be opportunistic. Uh but that uh. Uh so that's kind of like already underway, the tree, we talked a lot about that.
So is this the result of staff collaborating and brainstorming about what they think is needed?
Correct, yeah, because we wanted to go into last night's meeting with kind of our own thoughts of like our takeaways. And uh one of these is uh more like. What grants, what grant or grants do we want to be in a position to pursue? So there's a separate thing, I didn't make. Extra copies for for tonight, but I can make copies after the meeting, but this is. Uh the summary matrix that Christine put together for the two grants that we continue to think are the best fits. Uh and we, she looked at a whole host of grants, but these are the two that seem to be the best fit. One is the MVP action grant to go for another one of those and the match is now ten percent, no longer twenty five percent. And we think that's the one we really have our eye on for next cycle for this winter. The FEMA brick grant, we also think is a great fit, but that we think is gonna be like further down the road. Because that's gonna be once we have a project where we're looking for like. Uh you know, serious amounts of like. Break some more funding or whatever the, so. So the uh MVP action grant. What what really needs to happen, and and I will say, I I have hoped we'd get a little more toward this last night's meeting, we didn't quite get that far. On this was what tangible project or projects of all that laundry list of things in the. Uh consultant report. Are we going to pursue? In like next.
Yeah.
Which location or locations? With, you know, with all this three hundred and sixty two inch.
Well, these, this town staff tax are from the report, right?
No.
But I mean, these are to address the concerns raised in the.
Yes, correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I think I I would just wanna say the same as we talked about with the forty R funding, we don't have to spend forty thousand.
No, no, we don't think we're gonna need to.
I just wanna make sure we're not like finally sent.
We're not, no, no, we're absolutely not. No, that's not the, yeah, that's not the approach we're taking at all. It's more. What are the things that we think we're gonna need and uh and and the things that. At a staff level, we think. Could be out of pocket expenses and not able to be done in-house or by uh with the committee. One, I, we do think it would be really helpful to have uh. A contract with presumably G E I, but. An engineering firm to help us prioritize among all the different things that could be done. Uh we envision, and again, I speak for staff, not the CCRC, but we envision like an hourly as needed, not to exceed. The number I have in my head is something like ten K, you know, not like a blind check, but some. That way, we wanna have, uh you know, we let our team come to a meeting, participate in a Zoom meeting. We're not asking them to work for free, we pay them by the hour, they're made whole, we get the support we need, but without a, you know. With basically the work product being helping us distill this report to what. Specific project. Are we looking to get uh uh funding through the MVP action grant for design and engineering permit? Because that's kind of where we get to get between now and fall time meetings, what project are we gonna pursue? So that was one thing is having some engineering. Under contract would be good. The second is the traffic council, which we we had since confirmed, we don't need to pay for. The third uh. Which I think is a really interesting idea and and I do think the CCRC seemed to think this was a great idea. We had uh, we're conscious of some of the work. That might be done in terms of whether it's hardening up the the shoreline or doing more of nature based solution, any kind of work in that area. Some of that's land's town owned, much of it is private land. So some of the discussions the last several months are. If there's, if the town wants to take steps of mitigation that implicate private land. That obviously requires the town to have an interest in that land. And so. This came up at a meeting several months ago, uh Michelle was real helpful in advancing that discussion and. Sam said, oh, we had exactly the same situation Plum Island with some beach restoration. So. Sam did some research, he sent us uh an easement that was used by the town of Newbury. To allow them to do work on beach restoration on Plum Island. He sent us that easement. I handed out copies last night at the meeting. And what I think would be short money and really, really good is to shift that off to KP. And say, create a form of easement that is not specific, because we don't know what we're gonna do, but that. That we have a template that's more suited to. Our situation, so that when the time comes that we do wanna go forward, we're not only then starting to re, you know, that we kind of. Do some of that groundwork on like legal and, you know, I think. We might be talking about a thousand bucks or fifteen hundred bucks, but I'd rather have that come out of the article funds than like the town's legal budget because it's. You know, a little bit out of the. Normal of, you know, the other things we need our legal budget for. So so something like drafting a form of easement. That would then obviously be refined and customized when there's six specific situations. One question I had on the tree. Management. Butch is gonna go up and down the river and identify which trees, in his opinion, represent a potential risk to the infrastructure if they fall to take out, you know. Lots of shore, you know, riverbank. Uh. Some of those would be on public land, some of those would be on private land. One of the things I wanted to introduce for at least just. Discussion is. Does the town envision going so far as, for instance, securing it? Either either permanent or maybe even a temporary easement on private property to remove. Potentially a tree or trees on private property. That if the trees fall, represent a risk to public infrastructure, that to me seems like a bit of a leap. But.
Much cheaper than fixing a road.
Right, right. So like, these are some of the things that we're not gonna resolve tonight, but like, these are some of the things we're really gonna need to. Uh. You know, think through as, so so Butch, you know, the next step on the the uh the trees. He's gonna go up and down, identify things, see things that are at risk, we'll then figure out which are public, which are private. The the public can be dealt with through. You know, tree removal contract, although the one thing we might need, or we would need consults for for certain benefit from that. We're gonna have to do filings with with uh Com Tom and Natural Heritage and who knows who else. To cut trees along the river.
That's a perfect. Application of a blanket permit.
Right, right. And we talked about that, we talked about that at the meeting last night and and yesterday morning's uh. Is, yeah, like a blanket to do that, a single notice of intent, a single filing with natural heritage. Or tree removal along that whole stretch.
You know, one of the, one of the interesting questions, there's gonna be a lot of questions, but one of the interesting questions is. How? Far. Do you look into the future in terms of if a tree falls now? And we're set a chunk of bank now and it's twenty feet from the road, thirty feet from the road and thirty. Presents no imminent threat, but once you've opened up. That chunk. Then that area is beginning, going to begin to roll more actively and and, you know, it will increase the rate at which it approaches the river.
I think anything on a water side from the road is in jeopardy at this point, right? So.
Well, right, but but there are places where there's a hundred yards from or. Or or maybe even more in one of the road places. Yeah, where there's more sure, of course, there the there may not be trees that are at threat, but there are places where. But there's some areas where where, yeah, there's there's, you know, some significant distance between the edge of the road.
At least I can think of as well past Queen, that's probably under fifty feet. I think where else?
Um I don't know, we can uh.
Either way, I'll my comment would be, I think I could dress it off, you know, dress one, dress it off.
I will, yeah, so I I sort of agree with that because um, you know, when once you. Create discontinuity and what's there currently, then things expand from that discontinuity, you know, so. It's like, if you read the report, they talk about it's at the transition zones and, you know, if you put up hardened infrastructure to protect it. Um it's at the transition that you then see problems going forward. So if a tree falls somewhere and you say, well, that's not a problem, that doesn't affect us, but it creates transition. Then it's, the problem's gonna spread from there. Well, there's a good chance that the problem will spread from there.
So, yeah, the idea of of some kind of a like. What if not master permit, what do you call it?
Called a blanket.
Blanket permit, yeah. And that's the kind of thing where we're eager for, you know, getting Clay started to kind of gauge. How quickly he, you know, cause I don't, we don't know like in terms of both. You know, in terms of capability of every, every kind of he's an awesome, but in terms of capacity.
Hmm.
And learning curve and being branded, we're not gonna assume that on day two, he's gonna be where. You know, so so that might be the kind of thing that might be very helpful to have. Uh you know, an engineering firm that specializes on on repairing something like that and navigating the the permitting processes. One thing that I, was it Nancy who said, where she was talking about that? In her opinion that like. Any tree removal within. These areas because of natural heritage, natural heritage is gonna be looking at uh replanting plan requirement and they're gonna. And she said it really is gonna be considered back stabilization initiative and it's not just a matter of cutting trees. There's gonna be a lot of red tape with this stuff. That's not what Nancy would have asked for, I said, yeah.
So I mean, one question I had is. The people that don't live on River Road are not concerned about River Road. I mean. At some point, I feel like we're gonna have to sell this to, you know, the rest of the town. Um this is gonna consume a lot of staff resources and money. So I don't probably hear that, but um. I do see that, I think I'm gonna shoot.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Uh it sounds like a great start. Is there something specific you wanted to get out or just start?
No, I thought, I didn't know when we posted the agenda Tuesday, you know, I didn't know if there might be specific recommendations coming out of last night's meeting. And if there had been, I was, you know, I thought we'd put them to the board tonight. There there, I did have to leave a couple minutes early.
Yeah, I I don't know how long you stayed at the meeting.
I was there till till seven.
Okay, I I guess I left six thirty this time, it was seven thirty.
Yeah, I don't think they went much past, and by that point, they shifted gears to this medallion sign and, okay, so a little bit, yeah. That kind of threw us off. We were on a good groove and all of a sudden. We shifted the mats like, okay, well. Why was that attended last night? Oh, anyway. Uh so I think the next CCRC meeting. Uh but we don't need to wait that, we can't wait that long, right? Um, yeah, if we're gonna be, if, so so the the MVP action grant. Uh there's an R part that comes out mid-March. But if. Uh one of the discussions, I think you were there for this part of the meeting, is is this notice of and counter statement of interest. Does do, and late fall, is that required or just recommended? But regardless, it's really recommended.
And and we got a lot of good feedback from it last year.
So we really are gonna need to drill down. Quickly. To what are we envisioning? I I'll tell you at a staff level, the the money that we wanna pursue, the average amount of the MVP action grant is three hundred and sixty thousand. According to the summary that Christine put together. We wanna pick a project. And seek funding to take it through design and engineering and permit. Which project? Oh, why?
Seems like the area along field instead.
Other than the fact that. We're hoping this D E R grant, that that's already gonna get some attention.
Aren't they just gonna do the culvert?
Yeah, yeah, it could be, yeah, it could be a change. So, yeah, we'll we'll maybe. I don't know how quickly we'll know like what the geographic scope of D E R, but.
I wonder if there's any possibility, de- depending upon how things go with the D E R grant and the meeting on Monday for starters. Um to leverage. The compet- capability, capacity of the engineering firm that ends up working for D E R.
Absolutely.
To to work on. The towns. The town specifically as opposed to the D E R D as well.
Yeah.
Because they float together and they, they're side by side.
Right.
Um they are one and the same, really.
Yeah, yeah, someone made a point last night, it's a really, really good point, was that uh. The consultant that D E R engages for the culvert, they're gonna know the permitting reform is inside and out, right? So even though that's, they're not gonna be looking at the coffin, the bottom of Coffin Street, everything they're gonna be. We're gonna be learning within the context of the culvert they are looking at is gonna be directly transferable. And helpful to us on on what's ahead on permitting.
Okay, any thoughts on that?
Nope.
Not for now.
Actually, I I did have just one question. Um so I've talked with Butch a couple times. Well, I've talked about the meeting first and then first, Butch, about. The idea of um marking the side. The riverside of the roadway with some type of reflective markers um in the poles. Um along the field, because currently. Uh could be in a winter with snow, could be in a flood. Um where the road hasn't been closed. The side of the road isn't going to be visible. And at high tide, if somebody were to go off the road. And at high tide, if somebody were to go off the road, they could. In the second being eight feet of water. And, um, I, I think it's a concern.
And that is, that's item one point six here.
Okay.
We've already had, had court meetings and conversations with Brit and Dwyer, they're, they're actively looking at that.
Okay, yeah.
We, we heard what you said.
Okay, alright, great, thanks.
And, and I made Christine aware, cause she, she wasn't aware. Uh, but that Gardrail study that the town had had done by MVP C that was wrapped up in early twenty eighteen, you know, might be helpful. But, but yeah, the, the specific, you know, short-term safety measures and markings, they, yeah, that we've had emails around and around the street. On that very issue, so. Uh, we see that as relatively low hanging fruit.
Okay.
And, and yeah, we're looking for a bunch of wires to really be on that.
Okay, good, thanks.
Uh, I indeed, uh, corresponded with Senator Tar about the huge grant and Christine, you know, just. Update this.
Yeah, I was trying to find what the date of the meeting is, but I can't find my calendar.
Uh, August seventh.
I guess so.
You've got, I think, a call with him.
Yeah, so after our. Last meeting and. Not seeing a clear resolution from the. With your committee, everybody said legislative action, nobody seemed to know the blood. But I sent the email, sent the town's office personally and said, hey, can we get together and talk and. Educate me on the legislative process about this so that I can go back to the meeting. Need to be discussed and let them know where we're really at. So I did send an email to Wendy and Rick and Angus and said, if you. Uh, you wanna be involved with that. I think Wendy and Rick are not. Just sort of warm my guests on the, Angus would like to be, and as I said in my email, I would, uh. I'll just verify with Ty's office that. It's okay to have other people involved with the call. I think the objective is to find out what the legislation, first of all, would they entertain, second. Yeah, is there an avenue? And actually, Rob and I were talking the other day. And we, you know. The, the most. Realistic avenue, at least in my mind and Rob's mind, who educated me on it, is that the legislative could tie any funding for this. Neco William project into. Modifying the agreement beforehand. We've talked about doing that as, as, you know, a town or a group of eleven communities, I don't see that ever. Happening, there's no leverage there with the communities to. Be able to push that based on Abel's advantageous stance. So the legislature might have some ability there, you know. If you want X hundred millions of dollars, you have to. Again, I don't know if there's any. Stomach for that at legislative level, how that works. So there's a lot of questions, if you, if you two have questions. Put them in writing and send them along to Angus so we can. But then it does to sunny part of the time.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions of that. I mean, I think you've been close enough to it that you're gonna anticipate.
I, I'm now going in lines, like, is there a process? What is the process?
Yeah.
I mean. Maybe what this group has said and Angus mentioned the last time, if you show reasonable intent that ten out of eleven communities. Endures changing is that that carries weight with the legislature. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, I don't know.
Is Tar the number before the Senator for April?
Almost every other town but April.
Well, so that, that's helpful then. I, I think it sounds great, you know.
Well, I, I, everything is hearsay, is this.
Right.
So I'm gonna give some real facts, you know, is there a legislative option? What is it? How do we start moving it forward? How do we present it to the other communities? Um, nobody else needs to be doing it, so I thought rather than wait six months and.
Hello, and watch you.
Hit the brick wall, yeah, let's stop this process now, so.
Right, so Angus, you are gonna join him?
Uh, if, if, if it works for the.
I'm pretty sure it'll be agreeable, I want you to come to the meeting tonight.
Yeah.
To almost send an email and just say, is I agreeable?
Yeah, great.
I'd probably say, I'll just take Angus and dump Chris.
Alright, great, thanks for doing that.
We'll keep you posted.
Alright, item E, potential fall town meeting locations.
Yeah, and I just wanna. Kind of wave the flag on this, nothing besides tonight, but, but Jim had suggested and, uh. And Rebecca, we talked it over, like. If in the future we envision there may be times that. Uh, there's a need to have or a benefit to use the, the Kentucky Middle High School for a town meeting. Um. It might be worth. Doing that this fall just as a dry run. To kind of. Get comfortable with the locations, see what works, what doesn't. Rather than, let's say, whether it's next spring or, or a couple of years out, let's say there's some spring town meeting where we think there's gonna be seven hundred people. That wouldn't be the great time for the first time, use this alternate location, so the thought was. Do we wanna think about having this fall town meeting at the middle high school, just to kind of. Get a level of familiarity with how it works for town meetings specifically and for with KC and, and with so forth, so. Again, no decision tonight at all, it was just wanted to leave to start a discussion on that.
We talked about this a while ago.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a brilliant.
I gotta understand, yeah.
There, there's a ton of people in the community that would love the opportunity to go to that.
Yeah.
Uh, we're doing it for another, uh, nonprofit, but I can tell you that. That the sentiment is that there are just people dying to get into that building.
But we also get a lot bigger crowds at the town meeting too, there's not been a small town meeting lately at all, so. Rather than. I think it's a great way to do it.
Yeah.
I'd be pursuing it, that's.
Great, okay.
What do you think, Eric? I'm just thinking about recent town meetings and kind of, you know. It's been three years, four different things.
Yeah, but they're growing, as far as I can see, there are more and more people.
Yeah, 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 it's not, as you said, it's interesting, you know, we were. We, you know, outside and, and back to the annex then to. Well, there were some. Adverse circumstances.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I understand why.
People do love the outside.
Alright, next item was the, uh, topics and objectives for our meeting next week. So you, uh, the packet would just be your listed.
Well, so, so what? The, there's kind of, uh, yeah, it'll be that, and I tweet, I tweet that all the time. I added the thing we talked about with the summer rec.
Yeah.
Yeah. I added that two days ago, so I try to keep that a living document, but, uh, yeah, so we'll include that and then. We are batching under one cover all of the committee questionnaires. Uh, cause you guys did all that great work getting all that input from all the committees you appoint over the last year. We thought it'd be really helpful to you as a board to have that all in one place. Uh, and. I'm, I'm gonna add, I've talked to Rebecca about going through all of those. Finding anything that's on a committee. Form as one of their objectives and get it onto my form, even if it's, whether it's listed as like a low or medium or high priority. But I think, you know, we're trying to get to where we have a complete project list, so if committee X has an idea to do something. I feel like we should have that on the list, even if it's not. A near term, but just as a basic or an, an explicit documentation, we didn't not hear you, we heard you. It's not this year's issue. Might be helpful to, to kind of the bigger picture of getting to where there's more of like a unified work program as opposed to there being like. This town manager project list, oh, but also these. Twenty-two committee, like, we wanna kind of squash those together itself. Uh, so you can expect a packet of all of the committee questionnaires. And, uh, and then some of those, uh, you know, that, to the extent that has, I think, things that aren't part of. The thing we maintain. They're kind of worked toward a unified work program, that's the most ready to bring up.
Yeah. That could make your head explode. Add that to your list, geez.
As part of our recurring functions.
So as we're looking through that, one thing that I would like to do is identify what are required. I mean, it's one thing to be vital and high priority like River Road, but what is actually required in the function of the town government? I think some of those are not even vital, but I, I think we need to do them, like, for example, the, um. Performance evaluations and merit increases, I mean, you know, that used to be top priority. How could you do that when you're doing all this other stuff, so.
Yeah.
And so if we can identify those things, that they're not baseline functions, but they are essential for operation of town government. So. I, I really, I'm, I'm off the word in more tornia, but I think I'll pause on any, definitely any new projects. And like only pursuing the most essential optional projects is warranted. Because, uh, why are you laughing at me, Chris?
Because it's always gonna be, by the time he gets out of this meeting tomorrow morning, he's gonna try and put this together, he's gonna have more projects hitting them. It's just the nature of it, yeah, it's.
Well, but I think we have to step in and say no, I mean, it's got us.
That's what this meeting will be.
Yeah.
And maybe put everything else, you know, in a, in the file.
Well, that's why I like the idea of putting them on the list, but they're just not gonna be top of the list, so these people.
Just bring them right out of the song, yeah.
So for instance, you know, that two-page memo that went, went out yesterday afternoon on procurement. You know. I, I, I had Rebecca read it after I, I sent it and she was like, and I'm like, yeah. Procurement for the Middle Street Bridge, like. That's gonna be a huge effort, that's gonna take a significant amount of time over the next few months. These are the things, so, so part of what you can expect for next, next Thursday is, is, you know. To say, these are the things we've already, we're already doing, we've already committed to do that have significant. Time, you know, staff time impacts over the next, uh, several months and to kind of start with that. And only then add the things if there's, if there's bandwidth, uh, but, but I think what we'll find is, you know, one other one is, uh. The, the procurement for the, uh. Uh, investment management. That's gonna be a headache, but, but it is, it is subject to, you know, we are gonna have to do that, that is gonna take, in my estimation, twenty to thirty hours of my personal time. And we can't do, I can't have the auditor arrive in mid-September and not have that underway, I can't. Have to find the time, the page school study. I committed to the consultant this morning, I would get them my comments by the end of August, I haven't finished reading it. Like, you know, there's so much that's just constantly got pushed aside and, and then every day we're dealing with the. That day's crisis and, and never mind the baseline function, so it's, it's just. Uh, you know, it's, uh. The implementation of next Thursday's meeting is that follow-up meeting to take place, I think in September. With the chairs and anyone's welcome, it's a public meeting, but, but where the chairs of all the committees that you all appoint. Are all invited together to, to really make that action, or make the priorities that, that you set and that we set together. Like. Like implement those by saying to the committees, like. This is the work plan, and if, if your project's not on here. Don't be barking at staff if they're not working on it, because they're not directed to work at this point.
So is it practical or possible to just pause on anything until that meeting? Because otherwise, there's gonna continue to be things that are.
I think we have to, to the extent we can, I mean, you know, take this, uh, yeah, I mean, I could, we'll have a lot of examples, but, but. Uh, we have to, because otherwise, some of these things. Are gonna, some mistakes will be made.
Yeah.
And things will slip through the cracks and everyone afterwards will point fingers and say, oh, they made a mistake. Of course, like, you can't do fifteen hundred things a day and not make a single mistake, like, it's, it's not possible, so. Uh, and I can't.
Figure out how to do that, though.
How?
I mean, it's one thing to say nothing new, but.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm gonna throw a little game for you then. What about Mark Way? Is that his name?
Yeah, yeah.
He might be helpful to have in this prioritization of these topics.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. He's somebody we should be engaging to, again, help both you and Mendy. To get through some of this stuff and even the discussion, what do we put on hold? Do we put stuff on hold? He could probably help with that from what we've heard about.
I mean, I'm not sure if it's reasonable to expect him to be able to. Participate in a week's notice, but. Is it worth asking him?
It's probably worth asking, even, even if he just sat and listened, because he would, he would learn, he's been working with me for fifteen years, so he knows, yeah, and he knows. He knows.
He can help to prioritize based on. Do we take a pause?
Yeah.
Does a pause entail? What do you do, you know?
I mean, one, one thing, one thing in terms of format for next Thursday, that's kind of, I kind of like the idea is, you know, you've got my long list, that's not your list. It's hopefully encompassing of your, your projects, but it's. One thing I thought about, you know, we've all seen like the whiteboards and the, it's nice having like a big table of paper, those kind of, I want that kind of workshop dynamic. Like, let's say, you have this raw material and we have like, you know, we use chalkboard or something and. And we, we kind of only populate that with stuff that. That the board, like, and then one after the other, after the other, you're putting stuff on there until. You know, you're at a point where like, wow, we really can't keep adding to that, and then you see what's still up and out of, to kind of just. Help, help us, like, it's all important, but when it really comes down to, you have to pick. Pick a number, you know, what's gonna make the cut? Uh. Cause we're, 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 again, we're trying to do too much.
Well, again, that's for somebody like Mark Way, he'll just still it down, you know, what issues you don't address are gonna cause you. Signi- significantly more problems.
Yeah.
You prioritize those, what are easy fixes that, you know, what things are irrelevant can wait, he, he can out-prioritize, I would assume, with certain criteria very easily.
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, and, and we all know this, there's, there's things ongoing with, whether it's litigation or different things that, that gobble up tons of time that. There's no, there's no. Public payoff, cause no one sees what's going on and no one sees the time it takes, but it's absolutely not an option, we have to deal with it.
Not do it.
Yeah, and so those are the things that, like, as I look ahead to, like. Where we're hoping to be by, say, Labor Day. Like. The only way we're gonna get where we're trying to get on, on the, some of these very high-profile things is, is to just not do anything else at all. Uh. And in fact, to cut some of the things we are doing, say. Yeah, just positive things.
Yeah, don't kind of just prioritize them all.
Yeah, yeah.
So, do you wanna reach out to Mark and just see?
Yeah, don't harm in that, I put a star next, so I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to him and just, and let him know what we're doing, cause in, in, in any case, I did build in. You know, we put in the funding for the next round of, uh, leadership training, so I'll just touch base with him, let him know what we're doing and. And if he's free, you know, it'd be great to have him there, we just pay him his hourly rate and, and that way, yeah, he's so helpful, he's, he's a real great guy.
Alright, correspondence, um. We, I don't think these need discussion unless there's something that anybody wanted to. Talk about.
Yeah, municipal irrigation is what it is.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, I, I. Both, we've been pointing around and I just wanted. Asking, this would not be an immediate. Thing at all, and, and immediate. I haven't been, been dressed at all, but, um. You know, within the municipal, municipal irrigation. Um, process or program, there is the ability to. Um. Add a very small. Something like a. Tenth or a hundredth of a penny, maybe it's a hundredth of a penny per kilowatt hour. To the cost of. You know, the door, the cost of energy to find, um. An energy manager, um, and again, I will repeat, this is not something for me, but it's something to think about for the future. I don't know if that energy manager is only, can only, um, be involved with. Um, the municipal irrigation program, or if they could have, you know, water reach. Um, and. I think it's something that would benefit the town, um, on a long-term basis.
Another ready to list.
As I said, it's not a near-term thing.
Every time we turn around, he's getting more stuff, that's all, it's just, that's like.
Well, we were on a phone call tonight, yeah, I came up, and I mentioned it, yeah, that it's never been. Said here.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, uh, um, and I, I understand that there are, um, there are boatloads of what a fish is fried. Um, but.
Mixing our metaphors here.
I don't like it, hungry, but he said fried. Did I get fried with that?
Alright, and Elsie Hill, any questions on the variance?
It looks like it's going to the CBA.
Looks like a good outcome for it.
It's, yeah, how, uh, now.
Well.
However they act on it, it's out of your realm, which is.
Right, I'm not sure, I don't phrase that as a good outcome, cause I'm not sure how it'll act.
Well, well, they should go the variance group. How the variance should be determined is to the CBA, to the, the side, but, but it, that's where it should be, it shouldn't be before this board.
No, I agree with that, yeah, just. Enough.
Alright, also on the right to farm, I will reach out and make sure they, they saw your comments, if you believe they were not incorporated, Chris.
Yeah, they weren't, I mean. She referenced three comments.
Is it possible they just chose not to? I mean, they're not obligated to incorporate our comments.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, when we get to. Review. I I think it's. Incredibly misguided, I mean, oh. This this one says here, it's hereby determined that whatever impact may. Be caused to others through the normal practice of agriculture is more than offset by the benefits of farming and enabling community and society in general. That's a pretty bold statement to make and what I don't expect everybody to endorse is. It's an editorial of their perspective.
It's it's part of what I, I. I I'm not justifying, I'm just saying.
My original comment, I think when I sent. We were sending to you was. The problem with using boilerplate documents is you're always end up in the right place. You just walk in lockstep into the path and somebody's gonna whack your head, take you off. I mean, you gotta come up. I would have sat there and said, what's our objective? What are we trying to protect? Who's involved? Come up with your own thing. Why don't you just plug in your name on the boilerplate? It doesn't. And I don't think this adds well. I mean, they can, they can do whatever they want at night, nobody can complain. You're gonna have to sign up uh when you buy a property in town and you've read this, and if you don't. Follow it, you complain about something, you're gonna get fined three hundred dollars. Well. That didn't go too well when they were trying to pass the weapons by law.
I made the point, and so I I I mean, I feel like it's not up to us to. Sell this, this is something this group wants to do. I mean, maybe.
Well, they asked for input and they. I don't think they saw it. They don't, I don't think they read it right, and if they did, they don't care, so.
Alright, well, I'll at least confirm or point out that they may not have seen your comments, and I think we just. Let it go. Um, it sounds like we may not be pursuing any bylaws anyway, it's from a workload planning. But they, I mean, they have the option of going to citizens petition now, but I I think.
Well, I fully expect that, but I.
Yeah.
I. I am more than one hundred percent in favor of, is there, I'm disappointed we don't have something in West Newbury preserving. I'm not looking to shoot it down. I just don't think this document accomplishes what is said to all residents of West Newbury.
Directal for citizen petition for a special was a hundred. It's quite low for an annual, but for a fall time meeting.
I presume they still forget the hundred.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, there were thirty-five people at the meeting.
But you're gonna put your head out on there. On that chopping block, you better make sure you've repeated for what's coming.
Another reason to go to the high school.
Yeah, well, another thing with the citizen petition with bylaws is, as you know, once the signs, you can't change a comma. And so that's, that's one thing for appropriation or something, but for a bylaw, that means before you're gaining signatures, you need it. You you you're locked in with that language. It's not a great vehicle. Uh, a citizen petition is not a, not a great vehicle because you. You basically, it shorts the calendar by a couple of months, um.
So I did, I did tell Catherine Room, who's the kind of.
Yeah.
Coordinating on this effort that is possible that this like one is, you know, that for a lot of projects and we may not have any bylaws on the. Warrant, so they're.
Even if it was a citizen petition.
I know, but I'm just telling her that, so it may not even come before the cycle, it may just not even put on warrants.
And again, my question. If we. We don't have a choice not to put on the warrant, they do a citizen petition.
Right, correct.
It still could be there as was Richie Bacon's.
Right.
Okay, we still manage aggressively.
Well, it wouldn't be like it comes before, like other things happen, we evaluate whether we're for it or against it and all that.
We do, we did with Richie's. Right, we made a recommendation, huh?
Right. You know, I'm just, I I don't think it's gonna be as much of a um time effort for us, but see.
Okay, I just like to see if we can get it right, so.
Yeah, I. I I think. Judging by the degree to which you felt your comments were addressed, but there's not gonna be any changes. But. Yeah.
Not gonna talk it.
Yeah, but I will at least go up and make sure this. Um, anything else?
How about a reader?
No.
Or recess back.
Really, uh, to the.
That's not all sarcastic, Derek.
You go all the way down.
Yeah. Right, on paper, give me your.
While I.
Sure.
Thanks.
Alright, so just uh to. So there were some prospects of the board's gonna recess to executive session. And we'll come out of executive session for the whole purpose of adjournment. Uh, so with that, uh, it would end, uh. The the subsequent portion of the the public meeting, so we'll uh. Start the uh, resume at this point.